As time allows, in the order they signed up. And we can address further inquiries with our staff after the meeting as well. I want you folks to stick around if you did not get to answer your question. We're going to try and answer everybody that we possibly can. Again, for those who provide an email address, check the subscribe box here. We're going to be reaching out when we give you those updates. And with that, I'm going to return it to Justin Harris for our introduction.
Can I just have a quick question?
Yeah, we're going to have a question-answer after the presentation.
This is pertinent to the questions because I was told that we would be here until everybody had his question heard or question.
That would take us until past midnight. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that. Our end time tonight is 9:00 P.M.
Okay.
That's why we're asking people to sign up if they want to speak.
But that's the information that I bought. I just wanted to.
Okay, I apologize that that happened. It is possible that if we have a need for it, we could potentially do a second meeting, but we're not going to go past. So let me say this. We can't be here all night, so I think you understand that. At 9:00 P.M., what's going to happen is we'll have some of our staff here able to answer questions just, you know, towards the end, but we're not going to be staying all that long. And to get through this whole crowd will take that long. So that's the reason why I'm doing that, just so I don't.
So can we have a second meeting if we can?
You know what? We'll consider that. We'll let the city know, or we'll let the community know, is what I meant. So yeah, no problem. Thank you for that question. All right. And thank you, Erin, for going over those housekeeping items. Okay, I need to go through the folks that are here with us tonight. So you already heard from Daniel Chakolinski. Thank you so much, Daniel. And we will have, in a few minutes here, Balaji Vaidyapin, who is the Air Quality Division Deputy Director. Yeah, and if you'll stand up, Balaji, just kind of identify who you are. And then Tim Pippinger, who is Manager of Air Permits and Compliance in the Air Quality Division. They'll be actually doing that presentation for us tonight. Bill Lindenberg, who is an Environmental Associate Engineer from Air Permits, is here. We also have Dr. Feng Mao, who is a Principal Environmental Engineer in Air Permits and Compliance. And then we also have Michael Burton, who is an Environmental Science Specialist, Air Permits and Compliance here. We also brought folks from our Water Division, as we said. So Randy Mattis is here with the Water Quality Division. He's a Division Deputy Director. We also have Josie Marissa, who is a Water Quality Division Deputy Director also. We have David Kim from Groundwater Mining and Industrial. He's the manager in that. And then we have Stacy Village, who is a Surface Water Manager. Kelly Williams, Permits Program Manager, Surface Water Protection. We have Tiffany Tom from our Office of Administrative Counsel. She's an attorney. And then we also actually have an intern from Office of Administrative Counsel, Alex Higgins. Alex, where are you at? He's in the very back waving it over. All right. We also have Caroline Appleton, that I spoke of. She's our Director of Communications here tonight. And then with my team, we have Melissa Hayes, Community Engagement Planner. Melissa's in the back. Thank you, Melissa. Samantha Toes, our Community Liaison Unit Manager. She's new to our team. Welcome, Sam. We have Roxanne Winsley, who's a Legislative Analyst, and I think she's in the back also. And then we have, maybe she's up front, sorry. We have, let me see here, Joaquin Marufo, who is our Border Protection Unit. I think he's helping out in the back. And then Lee Ketchel came from our Information Technology Department to help us out tonight with the tech. Plus, folks here, we've taken this very seriously, just like you know. We wanted to tell the, I'm sorry, Metson Unified School District, thank you for facilitating this location. It was the largest space that we could find here, and we did rent it from them, but thank you so much for making that available for us. So that is all the introductions. I'm sorry that that took a little bit of time. So we're going to get into the presentations here. And as I said, Balaji Vaidyapin is going to be presenting. Tim Pippinger, and then we'll have Randy Mattis and Josie Marissa helping us out on the water side. Balaji is a Deputy Director in the Air Quality Division for ADEQ. He's been with ADEQ for 27 years and has managed air quality programs for more than 20 years. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Chemical Engineering and a Master's Degree in Industrial Management. Tim Pippinger serves as Air Permitting and Compliance Section Manager. Tim has been with ADEQ since 2021. Prior to his current role, Tim was the Groundwater Protection Section Manager. Tim has a Bachelor's in Environmental Science from the University of Idaho and is an Air Force Veteran, so thank you, Tim, for your service. Randy Mattis serves as a Deputy Director in the Water Quality Division at ADEQ. Randy's been with ADEQ for 20 years in a wide range of leadership roles. Currently, he oversees the implementation of the Safe Drinking Water Act and the Offer for Protection Program, and previously has led the hazardous waste, solid waste, underground storage tank, and planning and outreach sections. Randy holds a Bachelor's Degree in Biology from Southern Illinois University. And then Josephine Marissa, last but not least, definitely not least, serves as a Deputy Director in the Water Quality Division at ADEQ overseeing programs under the Clean Water Act. She's been with ADEQ for over four years now and holds both a Master's Degree and a Law Degree from Vermont Law, I'm sorry, Vermont Law School. So that was a lot of words. I really apologize for having to take that time, but I think it was important for you to know who's speaking to you tonight. So we're going to start on this presentation now, starting with Balaji. We ask that you hold your remarks until the end of the presentation, and as I said, we'll be having a question-and-answer session after the presentation is done. So go ahead, Balaji.
Hey, thank you, Dustin. Good evening to all of you and welcome to our community meeting. By way of introduction, my name is Balaji Vaidyapin. I'm a Deputy Director, the Air Quality Division. And our objectives today in this community meeting is two-fold. One, we want to be able to offer up transparency in our technical and legal rationale with the whole permitting process. And secondly, I want to kind of help explain some of the opportunities available to you to be able to make public comments and be part of the process with us as we proceed to make an eventual final decision on the permit. You want to be part of the process. So the way we have these slides kind of set up today is I'll start off by giving you a very high-level overview of the project, then I'll spend some time to talk about some permitting concepts. And from that point on, we'll do a little bit of discussion about compliance. And air compliance is kind of the back half piece to the permitting process, you know? To the extent that this facility ends up getting a permit, ends up getting then operated, when we issue a permit, we need to have these layers of protection whereby we have a system to be vigilant, be able to observe the operations, review reports, and ensure that the facility is truly being compliant with that permit. So that's what the compliance part of it will involve. And at the end of it all, we'll open it up for an informal Q and A session. What other questions you may have, we'll try our best to respond to. First off, we'll do a little bit of the project overview. Aluminum Dynamics is proposing to build a new recycled aluminum processing plant in the Pennsylvania at the intersection of Highway 80 and 7th Street. And we propose this facility to sit on approximately 22 acres of land. And obviously, as all of you are to be aware, it sits in close proximity to the Metson community. So next, I have a fairly high-level schematic of what kind of process they'll employ. And the process for the company will begin with what is called a scrap handling system. The first step in the process, obviously, is the incoming raw material. This mostly post-consumer aluminum scrap, basically cans, aluminum cans coming in. And they will be pushed through what's called a bail breaker system. So the bail breaker essentially will break the material into manageable sizes and also to make it more homogenized. Now, once you get through the process, and yeah, before I go to the next step, this process has the ability to create permanent amount of emissions. So for that, the company will be required to employ what is called a baghouse. A baghouse is a control technology to reduce emissions. And what I'll do in the next slide is to offer up a more detailed discussion of how a baghouse will operate. Once the material gets past the scrap handling process, it will go through what's called a decoder. And what the decoder does is it involves the use of a rotary kiln. And to the extent that there are solvents or lacquers or enamels on top of the material, the whole objective of the process is to be able to drive those contaminants away. And this activity, again, has the potential for some air emissions. So not only will this process have a baghouse, like I talked about in the earlier step, it will also have what is called a lime injection system. And a lime injection system is really a control method for a different kind of pollutant. It's called hydrogen chloride. And I'll talk about hydrogen chloride a lot more in the slides to come. But once the process happens with the decoder, the material then goes on into one of two parallel lines. They're called the melting furnaces. And the objective here is to, one of them is to melt the raw material into molten aluminum. And then additionally, on top of it, it involves the addition of certain chemical compounds to take away the impurities from the material, right? So you're trying to increasingly get to a cleaner form of aluminum as you go through the process. And again, just like before, this process step also involves control devices to limit emissions, and that is a combination of baghouse technology and the lime injection process. Subsequent to the melting furnaces, the material with them go through what is called a holding furnace. And the holding furnace fulfills a very similar function with melting furnace. The objective, again, is to use chemical compounds to blind impurities away and essentially get to a more refined version of aluminum. And again, same concept, well-controlled, the baghouses, the lime injection. From that step on, the material with them goes through what is called a de-gasser. And what a de-gasser does is, you know, you pump through organ gas, and you're trying to expel any dissolved hydrogen molecules in the material, right? And once you finish that step, you are now getting to a very pure version of the aluminum materials. And it is then sent to what is called the casting process. Essentially, the casting process where they are shaped. And they are shaped in these large rectangular slabs. Some of them are as heavy as 30 tons. And then that is the ultimate product of commerce for the facility. And that's what these facilities need, either through trucks or through a car, and they get shipped over to their sister plant in Columbus, Mississippi. So next, I want to take a minute or two to talk about the controls. I know you probably heard me mentioning baghouse and lime injection multiple times before, but what are they, right? So in the schematic that I showed, towards the very bottom left, you see the incoming process gas. What that means is it is the gases that are produced by the actual process, whether it's the decoder or the melting furnace or the holding furnace. These are the emissions that are coming out of the process. And what lime injection does is it uses a chemical compound, it's calcium oxide. And the calcium oxide reacts with the hydrogen chloride, the pollution compound, and you're trying to form a benign salt. So you take what is supposed to be some of the toxic pollutant, and you're reacting it to form something that is much more benign. So that's the hydrogen chloride control. From this step, the gases then pass through what is called a baghouse. And the baghouse is essentially a series of bags, and the gases kind of flow through the baghouse, to the bags. So they flow from the bottom, and as they flow upwards and they hit the walls of the bags, the heavier particles can, you know, when they hit the walls, they get knocked down. So that is really the purification technique. So as you run through all these bags, the gases can come out, you get to a significantly purified version of the gas, carbon dioxide. And baghouses are extremely commonplace technology. They've been around for decades, and they are literally easy to manage. The thing about baghouses that we watch over for is are they kept in good working order? Are there any rips or tears in the bags, right? So that's an important step. And as long as the baghouses are making very effectively, the levels of control that you expect to achieve with them is really, very high. Sometimes upwards of 99% control, right? So I want to provide the context before I move on with the next slide. Next, I want to pivot into a conversation around air quality permitting. And the very first thing that I want to probably do is to talk about the overall timeline. And for us, with this application from Aluminum Dynamics, we got the application back in November of last year. And one of the very first steps in the permitting process is for us to, for our permit designers here, is to look at the processes in great detail and figuring out, okay, what are the potential air emission sources in the process? That is the very first step. And once we get past that, we got to say, okay, these emission units, what kind of emissions are you expecting for them to have, right? And this is done through the lines of various engineering documents. And once we estimate the emissions, then we engage in a very substantive and rigorous process to emphasize public health protection. And this is done through a process called air dispersion modeling. And I touched on air dispersion modeling in a lot more detail a moment forward. And once we get past this whole emission estimation idea and the public health protection angle, we get down to the vast tax of writing a permit. And the permit is a legally enforceable document, so it contains a lot of different requirements. It gives you conditions on how different pieces of equipment need to be operated. It talks about what kind of control, air dispersion proposing to be implemented. It also talks about, A, what kind of monitoring conditions, reporting conditions, and testing conditions the permitting has to fulfill, right? This is the compliance part that I discussed before, because the permit is only one half of the process. You know, we work on a permit based on representations from the company, but our job, when it's done effectively, is to ensure these representations are suitably qualified and they are being made enforceable to the permit. So that's what we do with the permit. And the technical support document is kind of a complimentary, kind of a plainish version of the permit, kind of provides you more simple context on what the permit contains. And so this entire process of coming up with a permit can take as many months to put together. As far as this permit goes, even as we put the permit together, we did, we have done a few things with the community. I want to touch on that. One of the very first things that we did was putting together what we call a Facilities of Interest page upon our website. So we wanted to put that website up there, I think we did it about four months ago. And the whole objective was anybody in the community who's interested in learning about the application, the calculations, the things of the nature, were able to look at it much before the permit is available for public comment. So we did that. And then additionally, we made some contact with local members in the community. And our community liaison here in Qs was at the forefront of that. We talked to folks in the nursing home across the street. We talked to, I believe, the hospital's rehab center, that's not too far away. We talked to members of the school district at one point. And then I think we talked to a few select members that in the community who had reached out to us to respond to some questions. And then aside from that, we put out a mail sometime in the early part of May. We put out a document along with the utility bill that went out. And essentially, to communicate, hey, we have an application from this company, we're processing a permit, and, you know, there are upcoming public comment opportunities that are forthcoming, so we mentioned that. And then we realized that when the mailers went out, that the mailers don't go to people, obviously, who are in the paperless billing kind of format, so that was, we didn't know that. So in July, we did another mailer. And in this opportunity, we not only did we send out the physical mailers to, as part of the utility bill, but we also had the utility department email the people who signed up for the paperless billing to get a copy of the, or fact sheet or mailer document. So we have done a few things to get the word out there in the community along the way, which brings us to where we are right now. So where we are right now is smack dab in the middle of the public comment process. We commenced public notice on this permit back on the 16th of July, and here we are today in this informal setting, the community meeting, for us to answer the questions. And like was mentioned before by Justin and Daniel, the public comment period is officially ended with a formal public hearing. That hearing is very different. It's on the record. We use a court reporter to transcribe and record all comments made, and every oral comment made in that meeting or that hearing is considered to be formal record, and we will respond to every one of those comments. And then once the public comment period kind of wraps up, now we kind of assimilate all the comments, everything, whatever you've heard orally, whatever came through our email, whatever came through to us as a hard copy, or comments that came through to us through what we call our smart comment code, the E website, all of those, they all get the same level of deference from us. So we then worked for possibly many months to put together what we call a formal response summary. So that is kind of our formal response to all of your public comments. And when they are all wrapped up with that document, that document is transferred to everybody, provide official formal comment. And at the same exact time, we will transmit the permit documents and the response summary to the federal government. It is the EPA Region 9 office in San Francisco, and because of the kind of permit this is, it will go through their review for 45 days. It's legally mandated. And they get to tell us at the end of the 45-day review period whether they either agree with our permit or they object to the permit. So unless we are able to obtain a confirmation that they agree with the permit, we are unable to issue the permit. So the whole point being, there's still a long ways to go for this permit process to wrap up. So I can pivot on to some high-level permitting topics. So as a permitting program, we issue permits to stationary sources of industrial pollution. And these activities, if they have emissions above a certain threshold level, they are going to require permits from us. And permits are of different types. There's something called a major source permit or class one permit, and there's something called a minor source permit or class two permit. And generally speaking, this designation is driven by the level of emissions that a project has. And the third piece to this is when we write a permit and we propose a permit, the Public Health Protection Order is front and sent to us. So I'm going to spend a lot of time here to talk about this whole air dispersion modeling concept and how we came to the conclusions of the permitting process that the impacts from this project are going to be protective of public health. So first off, permit applicability. So this is, again, based on a concept called potential to emit. And potential to emit in our world is really the maximum capacity for an emission unit to emit a certain kind of pollutant when they are running on a 24/7 basis, running all the time, operating all the time. And then additionally, under their physical design and operational design, and also with any restrictions that the permit may impose on them. For example, if the permit says you've got to operate a baghouse, that function of the baghouse has to be part of that potential to emit estimation. So that's what we've done here. So with respect to Aluminum Dynamics, we've been very careful to look at the entirety of the process, identify every single potential emission point, and with the best resources available to us, be able to quantify all those emissions of 192. So then we evaluated those emissions. This is the conclusion that we came to. So in this table, I present what we call potential to emit for multiple pollutants that the facility will emit. And I won't go through every one of them, but I want to draw your attention to one pollutant more towards the bottom. It is hydrogen chloride, and you will see the potential to emit value of 92.3 tons per year of emissions. And the major source threshold for that pollutant is 10 tons per year. So because of the fact that the emissions of that pollutant is above the major source threshold, this facility automatically has to obtain what we call a major source or a class one pollutant. So I just want to establish that, so that's what we are processing for this facility at this time. And also, you know, if you're reading up on permitting elsewhere, you may even hear the term "tidy five" permit. So tidy five permit is another interchangeable concept, maybe refer to a class one or a major source permit. From here, I will pivot on and spend actually quite a bit of time on this whole idea of public health protection. And for us, you know, this whole idea of public health starts with this concept called National PM Unit Air Quality Standards. It's an acronym that goes by NAAQS. These are federally defined standards which are designed for public health protection, and it's designed for public health protection for sensitive populations, whether it's young children or older people or people with compromised respiratory systems. It is meant to protect all those classes of people. And they are designed for cluster pollutants called criteria pollutants. And there are six of them, and you see them in the image there. Ozone is one of them, nitrogen oxide is one of them, lead, carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, and then particulate matter. And when I talk about particulate matter, I'll be emphasizing a little more on it because we're, when you see, from the content, and it came to 2.5 in this slide. And essentially, what that means is, if we talk about PM 10, that is dust that has got a size of diameter below the 10 microns. So these are small particles. And then when we talk about PM 2.5, these particles are 2.5 microns or below. They're much smaller than even the PM 10. And if you're wondering in your mind, hey, what exactly does the micron concept mean? I have an image for you on the right, which is an illustration of, for example, you see a blown-up image of a human hair. The diameter of the human hair is approximately between 50 and 70 microns. And so when you, when you think about this as a frame of reference, you can understand that the PM that we are talking about and what you're concerned about is very, very small in size. And these are the kinds of particles that have the ability, but not well-controlled, to kind of go through to us and cause respiratory issues. So I talked about what these national Indian standards are, but what, how does a process do justice to it? That's the question, right? So I will talk about this in two different questions. Why do we do modeling? Modeling is done because nationwide, that is a singular approach to figuring out for any plan you facility, how those facilities' emissions impact the communities around them. And when you model, you are able to take these modeled values, and you're able to compare them against the Indian standards that I talked about before. So you have a comparison, and you can say, hey, I'm looking at every one of these pollutants, and they are truly protective because they are below where they need to be. That's the conclusion that you want to arrive at, your permit has to move forward. And what is modeling, right? So modeling at a simple level is a mathematical simulation. You're trying to figure out, okay, you have pollution from a project, a project like Aluminum Dynamics, how does the pollution move with space and distance? That's what you're trying to come up with, and that's what the simulation is all about. And how do we do it is by taking emissions data, which I talked about before, where we carefully estimate emissions for every single activity, and then we use what we call meteorological tests, you know, whether it's wind speed or wind direction. Those are key parameters that you need to look at to see how is the pollution going to move from the project onto the nearby community, right? That's what we attempted to do. So taking this into, as Ted further, and kind of talking about the whole science of it, we use, and we, all permitting programs across the country and the federal government use the same model. It's called AIRMOR. It's kind of the gold standard for air dispersion modeling. And essentially, the model is able to take on multiple different inputs. Obviously, the emission information from the plant are critical, you need to get them right. Secondly, the meteorological error, like I said, the wind speed, the wind phenomena is important. And thirdly, the topography. Are we talking about flat terrain? Are we talking about terrain that's up and down? Those are very important considerations in the model. So you input all of those correctly in the model. The model spits out what is called a model concentration. So the model concentration is truly a measure of the impact from the project-driven emissions, okay? So that is only one part of the model. So what we do is we take the modeling concentration from the model, but then we overlay that on top of what is called a background concentration. A background concentration is a concentration that may be pre-existing in this area, right? So there may be other activities that happen, maybe vehicle traffic that happens, and there may be some level of background pollution already. And the thing that we got to be careful about is you're taking a reason of the background, and then you're overlaying the model concentration on top of it, and the subtotal of all the bid has to be below the Indian standard we are comparing against. That is the test. And that's what we went through very rigorously with the company. And essentially, these are the results from the model, right? For the criteria pollutant that I mentioned before, here are the different pollutants, and I've not go through the rows one by one to read the results, but I will draw your attention to the fact that these, there are multiple columns. There is a model concentration, there's a background concentration, there's a total concentration, the subtotal of all of those. And the total concentration, ideally, you want it to be below the corresponding Indian standard. And when you look at this table right here, for every one of the pollutants in this model, the total concentration is below the NAAQS. And that is important because without that step happening, that step happening correctly, the permitting. And that is important because without that step happening, that step happening correctly, the permit cannot move forward. So from here, I want to pivot on to discussing a different class of permit. And these are called hazardous pollutants. And these are also established by the federal government by EPA. And there is about one each different pollutants. Now, I'm not implying that all one each are being emitted by this facility. I'm just saying that's the full spectrum of what EPA has got. And the one thing I should mention is aluminum is not one of them. So I know that there's been a lot of concerns within the community about aluminum exposures from the dust. I just want to be clear that within the structure of the air quality program and air quality regulations, both at the state level and the federal level, aluminum is not directly a hazard there too. But I got to, I got to, you know, explain that a little bit more. Can I say that aluminum is not directly regulated? It is definitely indirectly regulated. So when you talk about aluminum as part of the, the dust from the facility, the permit, as I talked about, has very prescriptive pollution control applications. Multiple, you know, top, top level controls like backhouses that should have the effect of minimizing and limiting emissions at a very significant level. So by having a beneficial effect on the particulate matter emission profile, you indirectly influence the aluminum dust profile. Because you control the PM, you control aluminum indirectly. That's the idea, right? So that being said, you know, I should, let me take a step back. So with these hazardous pollutants, there are no clear-cut ambient standards that we can use to compare. Now, I talked about the previous class of pollutants called the criteria pollutants, where they have these standards called the NAS. For the habs, there is no real standard per se. But that being said, now we spent a lot of time doing dispersion modeling work and compared the facilities' impacts to commonly accepted health guidelines. Not standards, but guidelines that are available both at a state level and a federal level. So we spent a lot of time with that, and that's what I'm going to touch on in the next slide. One of the key things to remember is, you know, we understood, you know, the location of the facilities relative to the community. That was a big part of our analysis. So we focused a lot of effort on very specific locations within the community. The nursing home across the street, the hospital's rehab center, the schools, the location that we are now. Those were all very, very important considerations for us. So I'm going to present to you some of the results that we got. So in this image, I show you the impact for hydrogen chloride, which is really the pollutant of concern for this facility. And right up top, you see it refers to short-term exposures. And if you're wondering what short-term exposure means, it refers to a one-hour timescale. And the reason for the one-hour timescale is because the ambient guidelines for hydrogen chloride, both at the state level and the federal level, are one-hour concepts. So we wanted to keep the comparison the same, so we modeled on one-hour basis. And the biggest takeaway that I want to convey to you is, when you look at the model results and these concentrations are all in milligram or cubic meter, that's the, the unit. And you see the value within the aluminum dynamics kind of footprint, you see the value of point one three. And point one three is the highest model concentration on short-term basis from this facility. And it happens right by the fence line. And that number, if you compare against the actual guideline, which are all better, is a fraction of the value. Both the state guideline and the federal guideline, they're a fraction of it. And the other big takeaway is, and this is important, as you head farther from the facility, the impacts start to bring with distance. So you see the concentrations at the nursing home, and then you maybe look at the concentration at the school, you see the concentrations keep diminishing. And every one of these values that we modeled, I want to just kind of reiterate this, are well below the corresponding guideline. So that was one part of the evaluation. The next one is, it looks, it's a very similar looking map, but this is more designed for long-term exposure. And by long-term exposure, what I mean is, there is sustained exposure to facilities' operations or span an entire year. And, you know, how do you evaluate that, right? So same concept, you see the maximum model concentration value, milligram per cubic meter, right at the fence line. And you get farther away to other receptors, you know, including the nursing home or the school, the concentrations keep diminishing. And even with the highest concentrations, they are well below the guidelines that we benchmarked against. So kind of, you know, it gave us this understanding that, you know, obviously, we understand the significance of what is happening with respect to proximity to the community. And we will talk in great detail for a round about mechanism we have in place to limit these emissions. But with the extent that we are being able to hold the facility to their expected level of emissions, these are the impacts that we expect to see. And these are the impacts that we are expecting you to be possibly receiving. And I just want to kind of reiterate that these are showing compliance with these guideline values. So there's been a lot of question that you've heard as to whether this air permit is already final. And if it is final already, why are you guys meeting with us, right? So I'm here to show you that this permit is far from a done deal. We are actively in the public comment period. We are very receptive to feedback, we welcome feedback. We think that we have put our best foot forward with our work on the permit, the level of engineering that has gone in, the level of modeling science that has gone in, but we are not perfect. So we welcome feedback, and if there are opportunities for us to improve on this permit and make it better, we are all ears. So I just want to show you that. And also, the other thing to keep in mind is, every single public comment will be responded to formally. And this permit cannot go final until the time that EPA has made in and has given us the approval to be able to issue the permit. So that said, you know, establishing that you still have the ability to comment and influence the permit, what kind of comments will be truly persuasive, right? And I mean this sincerely as guidance. Obviously, there could be a number of concerns and grievances in the community. But there are certain issues that are kind of outside of the house. For example, when we talk about zoning or light or noise, certainly, I think we very much emphasize that there could be genuine concerns for the community. But under the air quality permitting program legal structure, those are not actionable concepts for us, right? So that's one thing, one point that I want to make. The next point is, saying that, there are also other aspects of the permit that you can comment on, which would be incredibly meaningful for us. For example, you point out a technical error. You know, somebody looks at these calculations and say, you guys misplaced the decimal point and this number is wrong, right? That's obviously a very significant error on our part, which we have to go back and remedy. The second thing is, we missed out the regulation completely. So there was a federal regulation that applied to this kind of activity, and we just flat out missed it. We hope not, but if we missed it, your feedback would be incredibly valuable. And the last thing is, you have a concern with the scientific principles that we use in our permitting action. So I talked at length about the air dispersion modeling classes. Here is an extremely nuanced engineering evaluation, a scientific exercise. And if you believe that we made some fatal flaws in how the modeling was conducted and the results represented, we want to hear about that, right? And that the more documentation you provide explaining your rationale on why our permitting process is flawed, it is going to make those comments that much more actionable. So I just wanted to provide this context. And I think the last one is, if there's absolutely new information that is available to you that we were not aware of and you may get available to us, certainly, that can be part of evaluations for that, right? So, so again, just want to emphasize again, we want to hear from you. We want to influence our permit, right? We are very, very engaged in that process. And to the extent that you can focus your comments on air quality concerns, it's going to make the process that much more robust for us. So at this point, I'm just going to pause. I'm going to thank you all for your patience in listening to me. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Tim Pippin, to talk about the compliance provisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. As Justin mentioned earlier, my name is Tim Pippin, and I am the manager of air permitting compliance. I'm going to speak to you this evening about compliance requirements within this draft permit. So this draft permit, there are several compliance requirements, including operating requirements, ambient air monitoring, performance testing. Operating requirements, operating requirements include operating control devices such as backhouses and the lime injection that Paul just spoke about earlier. Operation maintenance and monitoring plans, these are long-term plans to ensure the facility is operating as it is intended. The lime injection rate monitoring, again, as Paul just mentioned, this lime injection is important to mitigate hydrogen chloride. Charge and feed rate monitoring, that is the rate from which material is being processed through the facility. And opacity monitoring, opacity monitoring is a visible evaluation of emissions from a stack. Ambient air monitoring, this is a very important subject. This is not something that is required by federal law, state law, statute, but it is something that ADQ is requiring within this draft permit. So aluminum dynamics would be required to operate a network of monitors throughout Benson that would monitor for hydrogen chloride. This is done for several reasons, to evaluate real-time the hydrogen chloride levels as well as to provide historical data. This will give us actual data to work off of in real time and will have responses based off set alert levels based on certain concentrations. So as Paul just mentioned earlier, the EPA guideline is two point seven milligrams per cubic meter. And so the alert levels have been drafted into this permit. At two milligrams per cubic meter, ADI will be required to notify ADQ within twenty-four hours and begin a root cause analysis of this exceedance. If levels then continue to rise and reach two point five milligrams per cubic meter, all operations will be immediately required to cease. They can only restart the facility after completing the perfect corrective actions identified from that root cause analysis and ensuring that HCl levels will no longer be that high. In addition, this draft permit requires performance testing. Federal rules require performance testing once every five years. This draft permit requires quarterly performance testing. So that is twenty tests per permit cycle as opposed to the one test that's currently required under rule. If they are below fifty percent of their limit within the permit for eight consecutive tests, then they may drop to semi-annual performance testing. But if any of those tests exceed the fifty percent threshold, they would stay with quarterly testing. There's also an annual performance test for particulate matter VOCs, nitrogen oxide, and carbon monoxide. In addition to the draft permit compliance, BTO has a robust compliance enforcement program. This includes unannounced inspections, performance testing oversight, compliance reporting, excess emission and permit deviation review, emission inventory, and complaint response. Permit compliance does not stop with just the permit. There is an entire compliance unit that will follow this facility for its life. On the screen is the contact information for both myself, Paul G., and Bill, who's the permit writer, and then Aaron, who's the community liaison. If there's any media that have questions, the PIO, Public Information Officer email, can be addressed that way. I know that there's been a lot of questions about water quality as well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Randy Mattis, Deputy Director of Water Protection.
All right, good evening, everybody. Bring this up a little bit here. Thank you so much for having us in your community tonight. This turnout is truly amazing. This is such an important process, and it works the best when we have packed houses. So you shall be very proud about your community. This really is great, and this is exactly what we were hoping to see tonight. So I'm going to talk about the aquifer protections program. So what this is, is this is a program that protects Arizona's public health and the environment through ensuring that any discharges to the ground or to the aquifers meet certain standards that prevent those aquifers from being polluted. Most commonly, this program regulates industries such as mines and wastewater treatment plants. But it's really anybody who discharges anything to the surface of the land or injects anything into the land that exceeds standards where there's a potential of that being breaching an aquifer. So it's really focused on that aquifer quality. When we look at aluminum dynamics as a, as a company and what they're planning to do with their facility, they are planning to actually discharge their process water to the sanitary sewer that flows to the city of Benson's wastewater treatment plant. Up here on the slide, I have just kind of a brief example of sanitary sewer, right? So you've got houses, you've got your businesses, you've got your industrial individuals in your community here discharging to your sanitary sewer. That all goes to wastewater treatment plant. And that's the point where the regulation comes into play with the aquifer protection program permit. Because that's where that material will either be discharged into a basin, injected to the ground, treated and reused, right? That's where all that treatment and everything happens. So in this instance, when we look at the aquifer protection program permit, aluminum dynamics themselves will not need a permit because they do not plan to actually discharge anything to the surface of the land or into the aquifer. But this material will be regulated as it goes to the sanitary sewer, ends up at the city of Benson's wastewater treatment plant. And we regulate it under that permit, which, you know, as you're all aware, that plant's been there for a long time, had that permit for a long time, so that permit is already in place. And with that, I will pass it off to Josephine Maresa to talk about service.
Thanks, Randy. So hi, everyone. My name is Josephine Maresa. I am one of the deputy directors of the Water Quality Division at ADQ. So I'm going to walk you through one of the many programs within our division that works to protect surface water within the state. So authorized by the Federal Clean Water Act, the Arizona Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or AZIFTIS, permits protect Arizona's surface waters. So these permits place strict limits on all pollutants discharged into protected surface water through a point source in the state. So a point source is broadly defined, but are common things as pipes, ditches, channels, or other conveniences. For additional information on which water bodies are considered those protected surface waters in Arizona, we have resources on our website, including a GIS map, again, available on our website for your use. So in terms of who needs a permit, if a facility anticipates discharging into one of those protected surface waters, they are required to apply and be issued an AZIFTIS permit prior to discharge. Our most common permittees are facilities such as wastewater treatment plants, mines, and construction sites. And a permit is typically issued for a period of five years. So in terms of the types of permits we have, there are two types, individual and general permits. So these are different types of permits available through the AZIFTIS program. And the type of industry and operation at each facility determines the permit that we need. So individual permits are custom-written, and they are specific to a facility type and the specific type of discharge. General permits can be a number of types, and they are outlined on the slide behind me. So again, that is for a specific group or type of permit or discharge. So to sum up, the AZIFTIS permits are intended to maintain surface water quality in the state of Arizona and protect our precious water resource. So for any questions, please feel free to contact our AZIFTIS staff or come talk to us after the presentation. And a quick note about the ADI facility. So ADQ received an application from ADI for a construction general permit, which was issued in February of 2025. So to be very clear, this permit only covers stormwater discharges related to the construction activities. It does not authorize or relate to any future operational discharges from the facility. Should the facility plan to discharge into a protected surface water, they would be required to apply and receive an individual AZIFTIS permit. However, as mentioned before, based on the information provided to us at this time by the company, we do not anticipate the need for such a permit. As ADI has indicated, they will be utilizing the city of Benson sewer system, as was again mentioned before. So again, to sum up, if you have any questions about the AZIFTIS or Clean Water Act permits, feel free to reach out to my staff or come talk to us after the presentation. I'll turn it over. I'll turn it over back to Justin.
All right, thank you, Josie. So thank you to the team that presented tonight. Thank you, Balaji, and Tim, and Randy, and Josie. Really appreciate your comments. Hopefully, those were helpful to the community. Just a quick reminder, we do foresee this meeting ending at 9:00 PM, as we, as I talked about earlier, but we will have our staff around after the meeting for a bit in order to answer questions and have conversations with the community. So as we get into the question and answer portion of this meeting, I just wanted to do a little bit of level setting before we get into it, just to set expectations. We prefer that questions remain about the presentations that have just been given this evening, so that we can consider any questions you have towards the permit for aluminum dynamics. A quick reminder that zoning is not part of the air quality purview. If a previous, also if a previous speaker has asked a question, we prefer new questions to consider those towards permitting. And then also, all statements have equal weight. Asking questions multiple times does not add weight to those questions. Some of the questions you may have tonight regarding health issues may not be covered, but we can confer with the Arizona Department of Health Services and answer those questions or find answers to those questions, and we will be recording those questions here for referral. Also, we're asking that you keep your questions to three minutes apiece at a maximum, and we'll be giving a friendly reminder on that, just to respect everybody's need or want to speak tonight, as was alluded to earlier. So we have a speaker order that Aaron is going to be helping us out with from those who have signed up, and we'll just have three people on deck at a given time. So Aaron, if you can, please let us know who the first three people are. Actually, am I doing that? Okay, yeah. Okay. It looks like our first three people, and let me just explain, as you want to make your comment or as your name is called, again, I'll call three names. First person, if they can come up, I'll turn over the mic, and then those three minutes will start, and then we'll let people answer the questions that you have. So it looks like our first three people that are on deck are Mrs. Shepherd, Dan Sprinkle, and Joe Townsend. So Mrs. Shepherd, come on up.
Given that you went through the due diligence of soil and checked the area as far as where that's going to be positioned, we are not, obviously, just, you know, offensive people. These are farmers, these are hardworking people, and there was a lot of really technical talk for some of them, so I'm sure some of them are going to need a little more from you as far as, say, be more lenient terms and clear things up a little bit. I have a husband in the industry dealing with the lime system, and he may speak to this in a moment, but it is a very good system. And has worked, we had Ann Rice of Bush for four years, and he has never found any cancers or anything in his own personal system or in the area around him. I see why people are, it is proximity to the river is very important, but you cleared that out like right in the very first slides, with it going into the wastewater system. It is not going to be dumped into our river. It is not going to be dumped into our soil. In comparison of ADI, the aluminum company that's coming in, are they gross polluters in any other states? Do we have numbers from any other states to compare that to? And what sort of thing should we be on the lookout for if that is a problem? Obviously, if you have that, okay, this permit, that was, I read that clearly and clearly that the EPA must sign off on this.
So the question I heard was, are they gross polluters in any other state? Did I miss any other questions, or is that mainly the question? Okay, thank you for your comments. And do we want to put that for water, or does that need to go to air on the gross polluters? Because you talked a lot about water there, but I think the question should go to Eric because this is in the air permit meeting. So are they gross polluters in any other states, and do we have any information about that from the other states, Daniel?
Thank you for the question. So we're aware of the parent company having some violations in other states, right? Gross polluters are not offensive judging, and, you know, their compliance history outside of the state of Arizona or outside of the facility, it's not something that we consider at the time. Each facility, each permit application is renewed and processed under those specific terms of that permit application. We do have a robust compliance inspection process in place, so if the facility is operating in the state out of compliance, you know, we're going to be there, we're going to take appropriate enforcement action.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Just a quick check, do we have the time clock that we have up? I can keep it myself, but I thought we were going to do that. It's okay, I will do it. And thank you so much, Mrs. Shepherd, for staying within those three minutes. Maybe Miss Shepherd is better, I don't know. I don't have your first name, so it's okay. Dan, if you can come on up, and I'll go ahead and start your three minutes.
So my first question to Randy, I think we have a problem here because you said that the water's going to be discharged into the sewer, but we have Bill Glazer, Operations Manager, on video saying that they're going to discharge gray water to our golf course. Doesn't that require a permit, and isn't that going into our soil?
Yeah, great question. So if they deviate from discharge into the sewer and directly create gray water as opposed to generating effluent from the wastewater treatment plant that's been used for the golf course, absolutely, they would come back into permitting. So if they deviate from discharge into the centers or discharge any other way to the surface of the land, we would have to look at it, and they may require it.
I'd appreciate if you look at it now. Like I'm saying, he's on record saying, so that's something that before we go forward, that needs to be looked at. And I'm glad you asked your question, and I was following you, because according to him, they are going to get the aluminum particulates, throw the water into our soil. Other question I have, I got so many under this discussion here. Can I turn it over to you?
Absolutely, yeah.
When you mentioned about collecting data for modeling, did you collect your own data or did ADI go around to you?
So when we look at a modeling, we talk about multiple different inputs, so the emissions information is given by the company.
Let him speak, let him speak.
The way the permitting process works is the application to the company explains the emissions estimates, and it shows where the engineering consultants are coming from. And this is what, you know, when we as an application, we are not just accepting information from an applicant at face value. We do our own intelligence, and we got that PHE's sitting here, and we got a couple of PEs here. So we review the information on our own and we independently verify. But I've been saying to you that the information initially comes from the applicant. And with effect, the modeling, that is something that they submit a modeling protocol, and they explain to us how the model to be run. So we have a lot of input in how the model is run. And there's talking about what kind of expertise you use from collected data, or is it the wind direction, all of that, everything is pre-consultative.
What about the money and time? What about location? Because we have a document, and I'm going to have to phone a friend, but I don't remember what document it was, but it actually stated that some of the data was collected in Tucson, I believe it was Craig Crafton 22nd. That's over 35 miles away. That has nothing to do with Benson. So can you answer that?
Absolutely, I can answer that. So I think you're referring to the meteorological data. So under federal law, there are multiple different ways that you get processed meteorological data for any projects. One of them is actually collecting onsite data, that one avenue, but that's not the only avenue. There's also the other avenue where there is a national weather service station in somewhat close proximity. And proximity is not like half mile, it could even be farther away, it could still be acceptable just to make a demonstration. And then there is a third option called prognostic met data. That is actually mathematically modeled met data. And again, the way the process goes and the regulations are, we just don't accept the data because they propose, they propose prognostic met data, but we do a very rigorous evaluation called model performance evaluation, because we are trying to ensure that the data that was generated for this area by comparing with other regional markets, we are able to establish that that data is truly accurate and representative for this airshed. That's what we do.
So collecting it in Tucson is acceptable?
No, no. So the way the model works is it engineers the data for this exact site and distance, okay? But then what you do is you expand the modeling grid, the data grid, to go all the way to Tucson. So if you can stay with me, you are mathematically recreating the data for Tucson, okay, through the, through this computer process. But then you have actual data in Tucson. So you're taking this mathematically generated data and comparing it with actual data to say, oh, there is very, very strong correlation between these. And one event that happens can affirm that what you produce for this area is truly representative. That's what we went through. And we talked about this in a lot of detail, I know it's very, very technical, but we discussed it in great detail in the technical support document.
Well, I appreciate your honesty that ADI provided you with your modeling data, and I'm glad the crowd got to hear that.
Good question. You only have back two minutes of your time, so big time. Also, I would, Ben, I would appreciate feedback later on whether you feel like the things that were broken down worked on lenient terms. That actually is a really good point, and we want to make sure that we're doing a good job on that. Our director, Karen Peters, wants us to be doing that and making it understandable for folks. It's a bit of a balance, because people want to know the science behind these things, but then also, you have to be careful not to make it so technical that people can't understand it, and it doesn't do any good coming to this meeting. So thank you for that comment. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to burn the time. We have Joe Townsend coming up next. Come on up, Joe. And then it looks like Catherine is coming right after him, so. Great question.
So my first question is a process question. So my first question is a process question. Does the time for giving answers count against my time for asking questions? Because I have a bunch of questions.
No, no, the answers are, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Joseph Townsend. I am the president of Benson United, which is a local nonprofit that exists partially to fight this smelter plant. So my first question is, does ADQ give any weight or consideration to public opposition to the proposed facility? Was it simply a matter of if the application meets the requirements, the permit is granted regardless of the public's opposition? Is public participation merely a pro forma ritual?
Do you want to address that right now?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't want to, I can't remember 20 questions, so yeah.
Absolutely, that's totally my issue.
So the question is, is this a formality, or is, sorry? The question is, thank you for the reminder, the question is, is this merely a formality, or is this feedback considered towards the actual permit? Daniel, go ahead and take a swing.
So thank you for the question. So no, public feedback is very important to our process, right? So we encourage you to submit your formal comments and concerns and questions on this permit, right? So that's the formal commentary that we're in. We're not taking them verbally right now, but in two weeks from today, from 6 to 9, we're in this same room, we have a court reporter taking those comments. And those comments oftentimes will make modifications to the permit for this area. So yes, there is not a fourth requirement.
And then my next question is, has ADQ ever denied a permit that technically met emission standards due to public health, public trust, or community opposition concerns? And if yes, can you give me a specific example of that?
Another great question. I am not aware of any time ADQ has denied a permit, and there's a couple reasons for that, right? So if there are concerns that are raised by ADQ, or you can be right, the permitting has a couple options, right? They can address those concerns and also make permit modifications. They could withdraw the permit, you know? I mean, not getting in a situation where we deny the permit usually though.
Okay, so to clarify, once they put in an informal application, they get to continue to modify their application and modify their application until they meet the standards. Generally speaking, ADQ does not just deny applications.
There may be opportunities for them to modify it, but if they cannot pass the money or make the requirements of the Clean Air Act of State law, that permit will not be issued.
Perfect, thank you very much. And then what are the penalties if the facility exceeds its permitting limits? I assume there are fines, but are operations suspended? Are the fines automatic? What happens if they break the law?
Another great question. We have our compliance enforcement policy and handbook on our webpage. I encourage you to go there and look at that. Each situation, each violation, each thing is unique, so we have, you know, a bunch of potential options that we can take. So I would not, sadly, not go on.
Case-by-case scenario, which makes it, it's a case-by-case scenario, which makes it hard to say this will happen, this will happen, this will happen, because it could be a different scenario depending on what happens.
Correct, and that's why I encourage you to look at our compliance enforcement policy and handbook. It clearly identifies what that policy is for the department, and it's pretty complex, and I cannot quote it off the top of my head right now.
Probably it's pretty robust.
It is very robust, yes.
Okay.
So I know that ADI is applying for an air quality permit, but aluminum dust and hydrogen chloride emits are going to build up, they'll just go away, they'll evaporate. Does ADQ have any plans for moderating aluminum dust or other pollutants in the soil or in stormwater runoff due to the air contamination?
My main right now is really the air quality permit right now, so that's where my focus is right now. I will pass it to my colleagues.
So this is a water question?
Stormwater question?
It's both water and soil question.
Okay.
If the ground is contaminated.
Why do you restate it?
If the ground is contaminated because they're spewing 100 tons of particulates into the air every single year, that particulate doesn't go away, it just builds up over time. Is anybody wondering?
Thank you all, thank you. The question is, are we monitoring particulates and what's happening with those particulates over time? Is this a water? Take it, Josie.
Of course. So the AZITI's permit that I talked about earlier, the one that if ADI was going to discharge directly, they would need an individual AZITI's permit, but what you're asking for is outside of that permit, and there would be no trace study, there would be no way to find the responsible party for that, that's what outside.
Okay, thank you, Josie.
So just to clarify that, because you sort of touched on it, because the fact is not a point source, ADQ doesn't care about the 100 tons of particulates that might end up in the same picture?
That's not what he said. It's not what he said.
Let him finish, hey, let him finish. You wanted him to finish, let him finish.
I would suggest a change in that language. It has nothing to do about whether or not we care. It has to do with the authority granted to us.
Okay, I will, I will accept that.
Thank you.
It's just relevant, about that. What solid wastes, such as aluminum drast, slag, baghouse filters, will be generated? And how can they be disposed of, and does ADQ have any authority over that question?
So the question is about solid waste, okay? And what authority we have over that, right? Okay. Oh, you got mine, go ahead.
So I'm not a solid waste person, but I still do have a response to it. The drast that is produced, they sample it, they will sample periodically in the facility because you want to establish that it's not hazardous, and it is not handled onsite. It's shipped away, passed through to a different state, and that is where it's processed. There's nothing that is done with the drast once it's produced onsite with the company.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have time for one more.
I thought the three minutes included. Do I get a redo? I'm not done.
So what does ADQ do if there is a fire, explosion, chemical, or some other industrial accident at the facility?
So what does ADQ do for fire, explosion, or some other chemical accident at the facility? Go ahead, Daniel.
Great question. We're not first responders. Those that respond would be not by the local versus response. That is not something that is within the permitting air quality mission.
So if it exceeds its, what is allowed to admit because it has an accident, ADQ doesn't do anything, is that what you're telling me?
I'm not saying, I am saying that from a permitting standpoint, any emergency response, any emergency, it's probably first responders that are going to respond to it. Then we can come out and figure out, try to what happened, and try to ensure that we're right. The immediate health concerns and some of that would be something that would be.
But in the meantime, Daniel, the point is for us to have a robust permit that hopefully prevents those kinds of things from happening. Isn't that right?
Yeah, yeah. Trash and compliance, you know, like, what are you doing?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for coming here. You are all professionals and I respect the time you've taken. You're going to be here until nine o'clock. I'm sure you're all staying here. You came down for things, so I really appreciate your time. My opposition is to the plant, not to you personally or any of the work that you are doing for the standards or the people listening to you. So thank you very much.
So now we have Catherine Townsend. So come on up, Catherine. And I'm sorry, on deck, we have Kenny Youngs, Youngs, Dims, and Kenny Daggett. And I'm sorry that I couldn't read that there. And Catherine has a question about, it's another process question.
I'm going to use the podium and I'm going to face the audience because I think seeing people's backs is problematic. My question is this. I reviewed the permit and the documents that are on the website because I was hoping that I could use Google and a very old notebook to try and replicate the math that ADI provided in order to figure out whether or not the numbers were right. But I couldn't find any of the data that I actually needed in order to do any of the math. So I reached out to ADQ staff to say, hey, where do those numbers come from so that I can replicate the math? What are the thresholds? What are any of the figures? And I got an email back very quickly that was very kind, that gave me links to modeling. And so my understanding from the email that I received from ADQ is that the numbers that we're looking at don't actually have anything to do with the plant that is going to exist in Benson. So this is all theoretical modeling based on some sort of imaginary plant that exists on paper, but not what's actually being built. And my question is this. I think that when you look at the numbers, we're really, really close to requiring further review. I think we're really close to meeting the major thresholds for ADQ review. And I'm concerned, very concerned, that what we're looking at is synthetic liner permitting where they give us numbers so that they're below those thresholds so that they don't have to undergo further evaluation. And so here's my question for you guys. Is there a mechanism that we can invoke that lets us get you to do the further investigation using real numbers from a real facility with the equipment that they intend to use and the manufacturer's guarantees of what the performance of the equipment that they're going to install is as opposed to some sort of theoretical facility? Can we ask you to do that? And if we can, how do we do that? And if it's not a function of us asking, what would trigger that? Because the things that I think would trigger that are numbers that come from ADI that you're just letting them use.
So the question is, is there a mechanism that can cause us to go back and look at the numbers that are not as theoretical or as she said? I think she's saying nebulous, that's not what we're saying. The question remains, so, yeah.
So what I would say is, you know, I understand the reference to a theoretical process in your comment. Modeling is inherently theoretical, right? Because you're using a mathematical simulation to figure out what may happen. Because right now, there's no facility for us to have actual data. But with respect to the inputs into the model, the emission rates, those are actually either coming from reliable engineering documents that we are actually verifying and applying in this case, or some of these factors actually come from comparable facilities elsewhere in the country. So, you know, that is what we have done. And if you have had trouble finding the information that you need, we are more than happy to spend time with you to look through them together. But if you have follow-up questions, I'm happy to take it.
Yeah, here you go.
I didn't use my full three minutes. I sat down because I have a broken ankle and it hurts. Okay, so I understand what you just said.
Why don't we put you in your seat and then you can ask her? Yeah, let's do it right here. We'll put you in torment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I understand what you just said, and I understand that the models are theoretical because the plant doesn't exist. And perhaps I misunderstood the email that I received. And perhaps I misunderstood the links in the email and the data that I looked at in the links. But it looks to me like you're just using analogous as opposed to saying to ADI, what machines are you using? What are your thresholds? What are you planning on doing with this stuff? How far are you going to go? How much are you going to risk? All of the questions that we need in order to actually know whether or not the public numbers that they're giving us are accurate as opposed to just, hey, there's this facility over this, over there that's doing this, which is necessarily what's going to be happening here. I'm looking for real numbers. And my understanding is that if we trigger the major thresholds, that you guys actually get those real numbers. And so I'm asking you, how do we get you to do that if they are, if they are giving you the numbers that would trigger it? Is there a way for us as the public to say, can you do more scrutiny? That's my question.
I think the responses, we are pretty much doing everything that you're asking for. And I mean, if you had the time, you're happy to set up, you know, like a video call and myself, my engineers, we can spend time with you. I can literally walk you through the calculations and explain to you where the numbers are coming from.
That's not what I asked. I don't know, I don't know whether it works for you. You're talking about theory, I'm going to talk about this facility. I'm sorry, I think, I don't know if I'm not using, I'm not being clear enough. I'm not asking you to give me theoretical numbers. I'm asking you to look at real numbers. What do I need to do to get you to look at real numbers?
So I think what I hear Balaji saying is that he's willing to give you real numbers. And I understand that there is a disconnect here. So maybe we can have Daniel speak to that. That might be your topic.
Thanks for the question. So what I'm hearing is you want real ones. You want to know what that facility, what the plant is, what goes on there, right? We don't have our numbers because it's not built.
Mexico.
So Catherine plants, and that's what Balaji is saying, for those facilities, we've got the emission guidelines, we've got that emission standard, we've got that stuff from other facilities or engineering documents. But those are still theoretical numbers for this plant because the plant is built. And I understand frustration, but that is the process for any brand new facility that goes through permitting in the state of Arizona or across the country. We don't have numbers. We have theoretical numbers based on engineering documents, based on data, based on EPA guidance and other documents. That is what we use when we have a permit.
So the answer to my question is, there is nothing we can do to trigger a PSC. So the answer to my question is, there's nothing we can do to trigger a PSC. There's nothing.
I think one thing comes, right? Clearly, there's a disconnect between what we are trying to say and what you're expecting for us to want to do. But the one thing I'd say is, you know, to the extent that an applicant is making representations, we are going through a process to verify and aggregate those values. But that is not the end of the story though. Because those concepts, those emission concepts are put into the permit's limits. As you skip through the permit, you'll see a lot of different emission limits. So whatever representations that they are making, in your words, from analogous facilities elsewhere in the country, we are not just accepting them on face value and moving on. We are codifying them in the permit, and they are going to be on a very structured testing frequency to show ongoing compliance. I hope that helps a little.
Go ahead. Let's go to Kenny, who's been waiting for a little bit. So Kenny has a question about the impact of one of them.
I just want to say, looks good on paper, don't it? You know, this plant being built, you say, is theoretical. I mean, why don't you guys get somebody that's qualified to understand what's going on like people have been saying from Mexico and all that? Get somebody like the Army Corps of Engineers to come and take a look at it. You know, that'd be a good resource. I mean, don't take it at face value because once the plant is built, you guys are going to basically say, sorry for your luck. And then we're stuck with a bad plant. Now, the other thing I want to say, okay? You claim that you put out all these fillers out there to let the community know. Just out of curiosity, I want to see a show of hands that knew about this stuff four months ago. Out of this 250 people. Wow, we got a whole, what, 10? See, you're not being honest about it. You're not putting, you've got people that are almost empty that don't have access to the newspaper subscription. They don't have access to the internet, okay? You were totally up there. You've got 250 people here, which is a good cross-section of the staff, okay? So you claim that we were all told by mailings and all that? That's a bunch of bull.
I didn't understand. So I did not say that we told you all. I told you that we attempted to tell you all, right?
We're going to understand.
Let me just speak to this for just a moment. I understand that that may be true. But Balaji is, I can tell you, a consummate professional. So let's not take shots at him. I'd rather we not do that.
I'm not taking shots at anything.
You're saying he's hard to understand. Okay, so let me just take some responsibility for this community maybe not knowing what was going on. I will tell you that we sent out, we did send out mailings, okay? Now, we didn't know that that was the case and you were, let me finish, let me finish talking, let me finish talking.
10 people, raise your hand.
Do you want the answer? Do you want the answer?
He's not the answer.
So we did the best we could. We made the effort, just as Balaji said, we are not perfect. And you have to be patient with the fact that we can't just automatically like ESPN say, hey, there's a meeting coming. We are doing the best we can. This is a new initiative that started in ADQ, right, a couple of years ago. And we're doing all that we can. So please, don't take shots at our process. We're doing the best that we can and we will continue to try and improve. And we did learn from that. We now know that when there's a bill that goes out, people don't get that if they've said, hey, I want it digitally. So we're making sure that we do a better job on that, right? So I just wanted to answer that question because I'm part of that answer.
I understand that, but we've got 10 people.
We did the best we could.
What he said, he said, what was the presentation? He said, all these people supposedly knew. Just that's it.
So we know that not everybody knew, but we still have a lot of people here. So the word didn't get out, but we did the best we could to get that word out.
So this plant is going to be built, it's going to be wired for that. My question is, why don't you be honest with the people?
We're trying. Okay, well, you may not believe that, but we're doing the best we can, to be honest. All right, and that's, we have come and we're here to treat.
I just wanted to add something. My name's Melissa Hayes. I'm actually the community engagement planner. So I actually appreciate your input about not receiving this. If there are ways that you think would be better for us to reach out to you in a case like this, please let us know. I'm sorry. We would really like to know and improve our process. So apologies to those who did not receive it, but please do let us know how we can improve. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa, for that. Much appreciated. And we will continue to try and improve because we want to interact with communities throughout Arizona and do the best that we can to connect with you and understand what your concerns are. All right, it looks like the next person to go is Kate Daggett. Kate?
Yes, I'm going to relinquish my time to Dan. My question has already been answered.
Okay, that's fine. Dan, why don't we give you a couple of answers?
See if we can get this even more heated. I shouldn't do this.
It's what needed to us. We want to be here and talk to you, we're taking it serious.
Well, here's a question I have. I don't even know who to address this to. I guess I'll follow it back. Do you guys take into consideration companies like ADI who have a history of environmental and toxic violations?
So did we consider?
Yeah, is that part of your witness test as far as creating permits?
So the question is, do we consider, as I understand it, Dan, bad actors, basically? That they exist and that they're out there. Do we even consider that? Well, he said ADI, but he said bad actors generally also, so. Go ahead, Dan.
Great question. So I appreciate the question. The answer is that we do look at the permit application that comes in. That is what our authority is. We need to work with that permit application, the permit fee that brings that application in and evaluate it on the merits of that permit. So short answer is, no, I can't consider the compliance history of the facility or company that's in state or obviously I've got to look at that actual permit.
Well, I want to dovetail with another question that, well, it was actually what you and I, when you came up to explain, I'm sorry, I forgot how to pronounce your name.
That's fine.
But when you came up and explained, so you said, you did acknowledge, and I appreciate, that ADI provided you the data, the measurements. But are you guys aware that their parent company, Steel Dynamics, since 2021 have had 11 incident violations? 11 incidents in four years? That's excessive, in my opinion. And anyway, I just wanted you guys, I want to find out what your thoughts were about that, if you consider that in the long run? Do you even want to give, you know, it's like giving the keys to the criminal or the key to the jail with the criminal. I don't think that's a good thing. My next question, and thank you very much for relinquishing, I appreciate that. My next question is... Oh, we did confirm about the Tucson and Craycroft. I'm going to phone a friend. Where was that? What was the measurement for the Tucson and Craycroft?
It was the nitrogen dioxide. It was made, the background was measured at 22nd and Craycroft.
Is that acceptable, when you're measuring the dioxide, do a test from Benson at Craycroft and 22nd and Tucson?
So I think the question you're asking is about the background concentration that we have. Let me, let me go back and do the slide and maybe we can try to.
It's not from your slide, it's from the permit application.
Okay.
It says your nitrogen dioxide, it's 5.91. It says that you did your background concentration for.
Sorry, I didn't sign up to see. It says that the background concentration for nitrogen dioxide was measured at places such as 22nd and Craycroft Monitor in Tucson.
Gotcha, okay. So now I follow. So the, when we talked about the modeling exercise, we talked about modeling the actual project, but also talked about the background, so background is what you're referring to. We don't have background monitors in every single portion of the state. So it's a very common methodology in modeling that's done across different agencies whereby if you don't have a localized monitor, you're trying to find the best alternative to it. And in this instance, we use data from Tucson working with the company. And the reason why Tucson was acceptable for us is it represents a value that is conservative. Because you talk about the Tucson area, more in terms of traffic and so on, where your backgrounds are likely to be more elevated, there may be an area like this. So that is the reason why that number was used. So when we talk about modeling, modeling is unique to Benson, is unique to ADI. For the background concentrations, you're looking for a nominal value to represent the air shift before. So that's where we came up with Tucson. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, I'm not being a smart aleck. It makes no sense to me if you're going to build.
No, I haven't started yet, Dan. I promise that while you're married, I'd be afraid to do that. So I think what they're asking is, and I think you understand this, but maybe we're not getting to the answer. The question is, why is modeling in Tucson applied here in Benson? Is how it seems to the crowd.
That, okay, that's the question.
Is that accurate, Dan?
We are not modeling in Tucson. We are modeling in Benson.
But the data.
That's correct, but that's just a number. You see what I'm saying? You're not modeling in Tucson for this project.
So maybe the deeper question is, why is that number from Tucson even being applied in Benson, which is a totally different place? I'm just trying to help get the question answered.
Okay, so I pulled up the slide.
Why don't they test here for the nitrogen dioxide?
I think he said that they do. So modeling is done here. I'm sorry, Balaji, you answer.
Yeah, two different things, right? So when you say, why don't they test here? There is no monitor here right now that gives you a nitrogen oxide value for this area before the plant comes in.
Then why do they compare it to the industrial part of Tucson?
Because that gives you a higher value and that works against the company in a model. If that makes sense to you. So when you talk about modeling, you model ADI's emissions, then you add a background. If any one of these numbers are higher than what they need to be, you're making a very conservative evaluation. So in this case, if they were trying to use something for a very, very remote portion of the state, except for low values. So in this case, if they were trying to use something for a very, very remote portion of the state, except for low values as background, that would be them trying to game the process. They do that. In this instance, they actually took a value from Tucson, which we believe is more inflated than what you may see out here. And that is a good thing, because that makes the model more conservative. To answer your question, we didn't model Tucson. We only modeled Benson at this location. But you have to make sure that you're reasonably taking account what is previously existed. And for that, since we are lacking localized data, we use the more conservative data point from the Tucson area. So when you see these results for, you know, two at the bottom, it is quite possible if you had a localized monitor in Benson and you had a localized background, that number for the total concentration is likely to be lower than the number that you see. Does that make sense?
But what about with real equipment that's actually...
Hey, let's, let's have the questions come from here and not from the crowd generally, because it's just gonna get out of here. Okay, so we'll have Dan ask questions.
All right, my last one, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but why, why is it acceptable for this permit that ADI does not have to submit to ADQ regularly so the public has access to their findings? And you mentioned it, or you or Tim, I want you to mention that about the reporting process. But according to the permit, there is no requirement that they got to report to you on a regular basis. It's self-reporting. And this is from a company whose vice president told the public last November, what's gonna come out of our stacks is warm, clean air. If it was clean air, we wouldn't be standing here right now, would we? How can we, how can we trust that they're gonna report the right thing? Because they are not us, they are not local citizens here. They're, they've come in to take a job, you know, and that's all they're here for, to make money. So how can we trust that? I'm sorry, I went pontificating for...
Thank you, Dan. The question I heard there was, how, basically, how can we trust that you're going to monitor and be looking at what they're doing on a consistent basis? Did you want to answer that, Balaji, or did you want Tim to answer?
Okay, I can speak to that. So I agree with you from standpoint that we just can't accept anything that a company gives us, including the dynamics, the face value, and move on and give them a permit. So the permit is what you want to have on the process, right? You know, our compliance system has to work really well. And Tim talked about a bunch of different opportunities, whether it's us out there doing unannounced inspections, you guys phoning in a complaint, and us showing up and inspecting, a lot of reporting. So you said something about that they are not submitting reports to us? And if you spend some time with us at the end of the meeting, we can show you in the permit that the permit inquires significant amount of reporting. And we don't just accept the reports at face value, we review every one of them.
I definitely would've talked to you. It's all over.
Absolutely. I'm happy to spend time with you there.
Yeah, and I think that it was made clear earlier that Balaji is willing to speak to people aside from this meeting. And I think that's something that you should avail yourselves of. Okay, so next three people on the, or on, on deck, sorry. Michelle Canyon, she just has some general questions, it sounds like. Susan Adams, who has some water use questions. And Nicole Bakanski, I'm sorry about the pronunciation there, who has a water ecology question or questions. So Michelle? Oh, come on up, Michelle.
Read it, and then you ask the question.
My name is Michelle Canyon, and I live two blocks from here. The Falls Plant is an eighth of a mile from my house. What measures will be required to stop the drought threats to the San Pedro River, particularly from groundwater pumping and development? This 174,000 square foot plant is proposed to be on 200 acres along and only 175 yards away from the protected San Crado, San Pedro River. The city of Benson relies on the water from wells that drop from the aquifer in the San Pedro River floodplain. Interestingly enough, the plant itself is proposed to be in a flood zone area. And line number 20 of the office building plan specifically says, this design is not intended for use in flood hazard areas. The gray water, which is somehow being diverted to the golf course, needs to go somewhere when it gets there. After it makes the greens look nice and pretty, it absorbs into the ground and makes its way back into the river, which mitigates the environmental purpose of diverting it in the first place. ADQ is responsible for the protection and enhancing public health and the environment by preventing and cleaning up pollution. Wouldn't it be easier to just prevent it? Being proactive is much better than being reactive. It's not only the Benson, it's not only the Benson residents and winter visitors, but all of our neighbors within 20-mile radius and everyone up the San Pedro River will be affected by the pollutants originated from ADI. Not only the control pollutants, but also the ones that sneak by control measures. Benson residents will be affected by air pollution, 30 tons of hazardous aluminum particles annually. We're in a valley. All those pollutants will be trapped in a hole or, and hang there. It might not affect us now, but in the years to come, aluminum in the air causes lung disease, Alzheimer's, cancers, and will be apparent in the years to come. Water pollution, I already talked about that. Noise pollution, increased road and rail traffic along with the equipment from the plant running nonstop 24/7 and 365 days a year. The light pollution, the plant will be lit up like a maximum security prison. Is once every five years or annually for inspections at ADI's plant, groundwater inspections, air quality inspections, and noise vessel monitors enough? I don't think so. Please do not approve the Level 5 permit. And how can you give a permit without numbers?
Did you have a specific question, or did you just want them to speak generally to some of the things that you brought up?
Yeah.
Speak gen, okay.
Thank you for the question. So I've jumped down a couple here. The first question that popped up is the groundwater pumping conversation and the water in the basin, right? At ADQ, we have the ability to regulate the quality of the groundwater, but the quantity is outside of our scope. However, in preparation with this meeting, we did talk with the Arizona ADWR Department of Water Resources about this basin. And it's, my understanding from that conversation is that it's not in an active management area. They do not have any regulations as far as groundwater quantity even for this convention. So, but they would be the agency that would regulate it if it were regulated. Gray water, so the gray water, if the groundwater is going into the sewer system, going to the wastewater treatment plant, City of Benson's wastewater treatment plant, and then the effluent is being used for watering, of course, that has to meet all the standards that are in that permit for the City of Benson. If they end up diverting and using gray water for watering at the golf course, that water would also have to meet standards. The protection program ensures that there are not discharges to the surface of the land that cause or contribute to the exceedance of the water quality standards in the groundwater. So here in Arizona, our statutes consider all groundwater to be drinking water. So what we've done is we've implemented offer water quality standards, which are essentially the federal maximum contaminant levels for the Safe Drinking Water Act. And we apply that to our waters, protect our water as it is drinking water, because here in Arizona, it very much is. So that's the answer on the gray water component. And then there was another kind of...
So is this possible, see that they're even able to build near the San Pedro? It's protected. What's the deal?
Yeah, I understand. You know, unfortunately, zoning, flood control, all that sort of stuff is outside of the scope of my position here at ADQ, right? I'm really all about the drinking water, the groundwater, so all that sort of stuff, I can't really speak to. Because I like the knowledge on it. You also had a component in there that was related to the air quality permit. I didn't uncapture it. Did you guys capture it?
So what I have, thank you. You have a question on the compliance inspections. So one thing I want to remind people, the permit is very protective. The number of stat testing is significantly above state federal minimum requirements. We're having annual state stat testing versus what is usually once in a five-year permit term. We're also doing quarterly... Yeah, quarterly testing for some pollutants for the permit term, unless they have eight consecutive quarters of 50% or below the standard. And as far as compliance and, you know, compliance and concerns about compliance and inspections, we do unannounced inspections for the airport department. And if there's a complaint from the community, please call us, contact us. We have an online portal to log a complaint, and we respond to all complaints that we receive. So the facility will be inspected based on unannounced inspections, based on their self-reporting monitoring to us, based on the stat testing, based on all the reporting. And any complaints that we receive from the community will also be investigated.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, Susan, come up. Susan had some questions about water issues. Did you listen?
Okay, I'm gonna address my questions to Mike. Okay, there. Okay. My understanding is this is taking a huge quantity of water per hour through the plant. And then it's putting it into the Benson sewer system. What happens when that sewer system is totally overwhelmed by massive amount of water that's flowing daily that we're going to go through a year? Is that when you guys step in?
Great question. So the question really is about capacity at wastewater treatment plant, and the planning goes along with that. Here in Benson, you all are lucky in that the plant, I believe, is rated for, what day did? 1.2 million gallons a day, so it can handle 1.2 million gallons a day. Currently, it's handling 300,000. So you have a lot of extra capacity in that wastewater treatment plant to handle additional growth in the community. Additionally, of course, they need to meet their standards regardless. They need to plan for it. They need to make sure that they're fully compliant with that permit, and that this water is getting the proper treatment, of course, this year.
It's being put on the fault report. And put into a maintenance system.
Yeah, absolutely. Arizona was actually one of the first states in the nation to reuse wastewater in these ways. We started in the 40s under the Grand Canyon. So reusing effluent from wastewater treatment plants and golf courses, golf course lakes, free injection into aquifers or banking, right? All that stuff is super common, and actually is really important. And in this instance, it's helpful to mitigate some of the water draw damage that we're concerned with, the San Pedro, right? So this water isn't being evaporated, right? It's being returned back into the cycle, as I understand the process.
My concern also is that it is our sewer facility capable of removing heavy metals?
Absolutely. So you're, all wastewater treatment plants in Arizona, like I said, have to meet those aquifer water quality standards at their discharge. So if they do not impact the aquifer, or if they're discharged into the surface water, they need to meet the, as if these permit requirements. So heavy metals, absolutely.
And you do realize that the San Pedro always flows about 20% of the time?
I wasn't aware of the specific number, but yeah, it's gorgeous, and yeah, I understand it's not running out all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, Nicole? Nicole, come on up. And Nicole has questions about water and ecology. Oh, that's okay, not a problem. Go ahead, chew whatever it is.
So first, just kind of for reference, on that last question, with, in reference to how much water we're processing, like right now, is that with our summer population or our winter population? There's a significant difference there.
Let me phone a friend real quick. David, is that an average, 300,000 gallons per day? Like, that's an annual average, or monthly, annual average?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because we, as we all know, it changes a lot. So my first question is actually, can we go to the slide with the long-term exposure numbers real quick? So looking at the numbers shown on that slide, I'm wondering how, how you managed to get right there, like right about where there's a helmet, down at the same cap number as all the way at the school versus the other one that's really close, being so low, or like so much higher? You get what I mean?
Yeah.
I saw that nice...
Yeah, definitely, all of it is very technical. Meaning? Yeah, all of it is very technical, so let me provide an explanation.
Congratulations.
Provide an explanation for why the two numbers are pretty similar, even the distance are so different. So the prevailing winds are from the south to north. So the school actually is, I don't, the, the prevailing winds are from the...
Can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you look at the prevailing winds, actually from the south, from the south to the north. Okay, so you look at this, this number from the, from the facility, but it's in another downwind direction. But the school appears, so the school is in a, is a large distance, but it's, it's, it's an other down, or downwind, can't, downwind, you know, direction. So that's why the number is really close.
I think I, I think I get what you're saying, the wind. It's just all the wind.
Yeah, all this way, yeah.
Okay.
So the basic answer is that's being monitored downwind, basically? Is that right? The wind moves in that direction, so that's why you see those numbers. Is that accurate? Okay, excellent.
Okay, so, next thing is with, pardon if I'm wrong, but if I remember correctly, that area is in a floodplain. So I guess this would be you guys. So is there required to be any remediation plans for if anything is, like if it floods and there's, for lack of a better word, stuff gets into that? Or basically, what's the main plan with that?
I get what you're saying. Yeah, so for the aquifer protection program permit, because they don't require, there's nothing that requires them to have a response plan to in response to flooding. However, if they did have flooding and they discharge materials that have the probability of causing or contributing to an exceedance of those ADQ as the drink water standards apply to our groundwater, then they would need to, of course, remediate those and prevent that damage to the aquifer.
And then one last thing, not trying to make it political, so please don't take it there. With changes that have been happening within the EPA and their structure management, whoever's running that, could that potentially affect the review process that this will be going through? Because I already said it has to go through the EPA as well.
So yeah, the question is, will changes at EPA change things as far as how we monitor and permit?
Interesting question. Thank you. I can't speculate on what's gonna happen at EPA, right? I just know EPA has a statutory authority to do a review within 45 days. And I expect EPA to follow federal law and assess their requirements to do that review.
Thank you so much for the questions, Nicole. Great job. Okay, next we have Kimberly Spoken, who is speaking about safety, water, ecology, et cetera. And then William Shepherd, Water and AQMD. And then Frank Chavez, Environmental Concerns. So Kimberly, there you go.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Spoken. I live just opposite of the plant. I live so close to it that they put up a fence, brand new fence for me. Okay, I live on the same exact floodplain. Okay, I live on the same exact floodplain. So I have quite a few questions. When you're modeling, do you guys know about the cyclonic winds that come two seasons a year that go from the southwest portion of the property, from across the river and cut through my property? Sometimes as narrow as this easel, sometimes as wide as my house that will be picking up those particles and just blowing through my property and all of everything? Are you guys even aware of this? Because those are very unique currents.
Next question. Were we aware of the air currents, cyclonic winds?
Uh...
Pull it out. Yeah, pull hard.
We call them dust devils. Everybody has dust devils, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can sort of with A D Q meteorologist, so look at the Benson area, the meteorologist told us, there are two components of winds. One is a drainage flow from the south to north around the valley orientation. This is one component. The other component, maybe you said, you know, is original scale waves from the west to east. So the two components.
Southwest to northeast.
Yeah, so these are components, two components of winds. So the problem, the data, you know, the major data modeling used has captured these two components, you know, drainage flow and original scale flow.
Okay, well, when you're talking about how these highest ratings are only at the floodplain, first of all, that's my floodplain. So it doesn't belong in a residential area. My children, my... I have children at home, run that floodplain on their horses on a regular basis.
Okay, just to be clear, the answer I heard was that they are aware of the winds that come through there and that they've projected for what's going to be happening. Is that accurate? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I also share that floodplain. Whenever it rains, the water runs into the river and heads up north. So these contaminants that you're only worried about being in the air that fall on the ground are then going to rush into the San Pedro River. And they're going to rush into the San Pedro River even more than they did before because they've already cleared that entire riparian area. My family's already been down there and the foundation has already been made. So that increases the flood risks and that's probably why it's set right on their paperwork that this doesn't belong in a floodplain, would be my assumption. So airborne particles fall on the ground. You also said that you looked at one an hour effects, you looked at one year effects. I think more of us are concerned with ten year and twenty year. I think we're concerned about our children and we're concerned about our grandchildren. I have... I have a one hundred foot well. How long will it take for these forever chemicals with the seasonal rains to sink down and for me to have these chemicals in my drinking water and the drinking water of my children? Do you have those numbers? Do you have the numbers of them accumulating in the systems of our children in five, ten and twenty years? Because those are the numbers of my concern at all.
So the question I'm hearing is, are we projecting for ten, twenty, thirty years down the line? That sounded like water to me, but maybe it's, it's air.
Well, so is air.
Right, so who wants to pick it? Who wants to pick it up? Bology? Oh, you have one? I have two mics. How did that happen?
Thank you for your questions. I understand your concerns. You're not going to like the answer. We can take this down and keep updating ADHS, that's a healthy consideration. It's something that's outside of my authority and, you know, and what we're looking at and through their quality permit. We can write this, crush this down, reach out to ADHS to see if they have any information, but I don't, I don't have any information, I'm sorry.
Um, if you have any questions?
I don't have any.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm trying to hold the mic.
Okay, there's been a lot of talk also about the fact that this is in a valley. Have these studies that you guys and these modeling plans that you guys are basing the residue and the effects on, are you basing it on a valley? Because in valleys, things sit a lot longer. They don't have a way to escape. We have the same thing with the riverbed.
So that's a good question, you know? When we do modeling, you know, we are taking localized conditions into account. You talked about the winds and he talked about both the prevailing winds and the original scale of winds. Similarly, topography is taken into account, it's a very, very key input in the model. What kind of terrain you have, is it flat, is it complex, is it hilly? All of them is a consideration. So because that has a direct effect in how the pollution moves. So what they're talking about with respect to how the land is here is inherently a part of the model. It's back to it.
But doesn't that mean that we would have a huge amount of variability in the emissions, how they test in just one spot on my property or another? I've got a riverbed on my property. It's over fifteen feet deep.
Yeah, to be clear, when we run a model, we are not running it for a specific spot. A model follows what's on the grid pattern, we run for several months. So you take the facility from where the project is happening and where the emissions are occurring and you spread it out, you span out and then you're looking through a computer model, it's very small spacing, how the impacts change from one location to another. So the very concept of, hey, you could have extremely complex terrain and I don't know what exact impacts are actually occurring. That question is answered because the model is so pinpoint in how narrow the grid is. You're not saying one receptor here and another receptor on my way. They are much more closely spaced. So we have pretty good feel for how the concentrations are changing based on where you are around.
Okay, so how the concentration has changed on the ground when this particulate matter falls down and then it rains. We have a monsoon and it floods up north through the river. And then how does it affect the beef? We've got a lot of ranches that help us here and they feed our nation. And this is free range land. So these animals are grazing. They're going to be rained on by it, they're going to be walking in it, breathing it in, eating it and drinking it. They drink directly out of the San Pedro River. By the time they reach market age, they're two to five years old. How much residue is going to be in the beef by the time they're marketed, butchered and distributed all over this country?
It is certainly a valid question from a big picture standpoint. And I don't want to sound specific, but you know, we cannot go back to the principles of what legal authority we have in the permitting process. We control what is being emitted in the air, right? And that's, and I might like to keep it the focus very narrow here, but I'm generally saying the permit is all about air emissions.
But it does affect the ground.
I'm not denying that.
So who's in charge of that? Is it me? Because no one's protected the right area in area. So all this protected stuff and all these regulations that aren't being regulated. My full idea.
So we're at three minutes and so I'm going to let Bology answer this question and we're going to move on to the next feature. But thank you for the question.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
So certainly from an airport standpoint, you know, we explained what you've done and what the permit describes. And I think, you know, Randy and Josie talked about what happens, you know, with respect to the stuff that's going into these certain rock rocks on earth. But with respect to your questions about what happens in terms of soil contamination and things like that, I'm just going to explain that is just not central to what we do. It's, the airport program has got a very narrow niche and we got to apply our principles and do the permitting with respect to air. So I'm just not, I'm able to answer your question directly because it's out of our wheelhouse.
But if you're supposed to be with the American Department of Environmental Quality, do you care? Do you fault it?
So again, let's not make this about caring or not caring. We're talking about what's in the permit and this is the permit that's been applied.
You fault it to your corporate.
We, it's, that's, that is a valid question. We, let me write it down and we'll look into it for you. Because there is a component at A D Q that deals with soil. And we've had conversations about the fact that, yes, this is air, this is water, there's also waste or soil, right? You don't distinguish between that. You just want your community to be safe. So we understand the question and I'll write that down. Why don't we go on to Will Shepherd? Is Will here? I think that's the next person. Kim, then Will, okay. It looks like we may not have William here, maybe he had to go. Let's go to Frank Chavez then. And Frank speaking about environmental concerns.
Thank you. I'm not a very good speaker, but the questions are very important. I am concerned, this town was built way away, very, however, the water lines.
Are you having a hard time?
The water lines, okay, the water lines, how many gallons per minute, the pressure that's going to be regulated for that power plant to operate correctly? That's what my concern is. Because anybody around there, you're going to have to put regulators for your house because your faucets are going to bust, your water lines are going to bust. I want to know what is water per minute that the city of Benson requires for it to op, for it to keep the operation of this facility up and running? With the water, we're talking about water, because if you kind of have water, they said they had the water. If you don't have water, there has to be so many cubic feet of water going to that pipeline for them now. I don't know how old this pipeline is, but when you're putting a lot of pressure on it, pipeline has been thirty, forty, fifty years old, it might not handle the pressure that is needed because you're going to have to pump up those pumps.
Frank, thank you for that question. I'm going to try and restate it and stop your time here because I was writing at the same time you were asking it. So I think the question again has to do with capacity and whether the city's sewers slash pipelines.
The water, the water is going to move, water pipes. This, you know, the wires.
Okay, it sounds like Randy understands the question and I didn't quite get it. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the question is, this facility is going to need a lot of water, concerns about that water pressure in the drinking water systems and having impacts on homeowners, faucets and whatnot.
Yes, my second question. The first is, how much pressure is this factory going to require to maintain an adequate balance to produce with the chemicals for this aluminum?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. You know, the ensuring that the water system can deliver what has been promised is really a, a city concern. I will say however, that generally when you're dealing with facilities that need a lot of water, you solve that by increasing the diameter of the pipe, not by jacking the pressure way up, right? So generally, it's a, it's a diameter problem, not a, not a pressure problem, right? But yeah, absolutely. But a really great question for the city, I don't have an answer, but definitely something that would have to be addressed, you know, to make sure they get the water that they're contracting to get.
The other thing, I guess it must be to change to you. I am an old air conditioning repairman, so I deal with sensors with all this new stuff. My concern is if the water is not there, will the sensor because of the water pressure didn't do what it was supposed to do so that everything works proper? What sensor prevents it from lo, from this thing automatically knocking down itself without having an individual to turn that switch off? Because you're, let's say, one of the sensors fails, okay? And this has to project to you guys. It, it fails the stack, all these pollutants that's not supposed to be going through that chimney. What is it going to prevent it that everybody says, hey, there's something wrong, the air quality, the air that's coming out of the roof, out of the, the stack is not up and it's in the danger zone?
Thank you, sir. So, oh, thank you, Frank. Okay, great. So the question I'm hearing there is, what assurance, what assurances do we have that the monitors are going to be working and that they're not going to be, were you saying overloaded or, or not working altogether?
One sensor breaks, the machine keeps working. What's coming out of that stack no longer is not true.
So the question is, what assurances do we have that the sensors are going?
Air quality, because once it comes out of there, now it's yours. It's the air quality.
Yeah, I got you. So when you talk about sensors and them breaking down, are you talking about control equipment?
Yes, but, but the air that's going to come out of that stack, yes, yes, controlled phase.
Would that be correct? Okay, so the permit is very prescriptive, you know, if a control system goes down, the facility has to go down. So meaning there is no ability for the company to take their controls off or even if they're functioning, to keep on going and pump out uncontrolled emissions. That would be a serious interaction of the permit and that would create something, if they did, we would go after them in some kind of enforcement kind of thing, right? So that's a very important principle because all the representations in the permit are based upon them using a certain level of control.
Right.
And those controls need to be achieved, right? So we have checks and balances in place in the permit through different kinds of plants whereby they got to keep up on them and make sure they're working order. And should they, for some reason, go down, they got to take the plant down, repair the equipment before they come back up.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Frank. Okay, it looks like the next three people we have on, on deck here are Hope Chavez, Mike Morse and Ron Brooks. So Hope, come on up, Hope. Thank you. There you go.
Okay, so the company is the one that's going to, you know, if this number went down or if the controls stopped and the pollutants are going to up the stacks, or who is going to stop that? Does it automatically stop?
The plant doesn't automatically go down, but there are conditions in the permit that would legally stipulate that the plant has to go down. So when, when a control system is failing, I'll take an example for you. I talked about this hydrogen chloride injection system, that is where you add, sorry, lime injection system to control hydrogen chloride. When that system is failing, there is the prospect of an uncontrolled release of hydrogen chloride that is entirely inoffensive. Should that system go down and, you know, the facility is still operating, that would be a significant violation. So when all inspectors go for the property periodically and check, what they do with, they walk around, they are obviously do physical observations, but they look through that and lots of evidence are there from. So when they are arguing the system that their lime injection system went down at a certain time and if there's evidence that the process was still operating beyond that timeframe, that would be a violation of the permit.
Okay, so is somebody always monitoring that?
Somebody is, yeah, somebody, the plant is always monitoring that. And the permit would legally stipulate that they need to submit a report to us within a timely fashion and then we do investigation.
And what is it timed exactly?
So when you, when you have what is called an excess emission event under state law, there is a requirement to report within twenty-four hours by either telephone or by email or by fax. And then they are required on top of it to submit a more detailed report in three days, essentially that explains, hey, what is the root cause of why this all happened? And what kind of countermeasures we put in place to remedy that now and the fact that we are now back up and running. And again, we don't take this information face, so we do more investigation to ensure that, hey, that actually happened. They take a plant down in a timely fashion when some unplanned environmental incident happens. So we check on it.
Okay. Another question, should the company have its own hazmat unit available to them?
That's outside my, you know, control.
Can you restate the question? Shouldn't they have their own hazmat facility people that are on, onsite? Okay?
So what I do know that is they have what is called an emergency evacuation plan for working facility if something bad happens. And I believe they have a fight plan that the city of Benson, I don't know the status of it. But to be clear, that component with respect to what happens in an emergency or who they need to have trained within the facility, that is not something that A D Q, the airport permit can think of. We just look at our department. So that is something that's come out by the company, maybe working in close coordination with Benson Fire Department and that process happens separately on that, that side, not through us.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. One thing that I don't think has been brought up is the hazards to the workers in this plant. I was reading up on them, and there are quite a few. Besides a lot of accidents happening to hands, to arms, because of the machinery that they are working with, equipment and stuff like that, then we have a lot of high blood pressure problems. We have high glucose, glucose problems, increased hypertension in these workers, elevated hemoglobin. And this is throughout different plants that bring this on. In particular, they have a lot of prostate cancer, lung and stomach cancer, as COPD, a lot of things. So as we think about this, let's think about the people that are going to be working there too.
Thank you, Eric. And that's one of the topics that we wanted to look into with DHS. I don't think it's under the purview of the. Oh, that is an OSHA requirement, I apologize. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, um Hope and then Mike. Mike, are you here? Mike Morse?
My, my question's been asked and answered.
Oh, it has, okay.
If you wanna give my time to somebody else.
Yeah, we'll just move on and we'll give it to the next person. Um so we have Ron Brooks is next. Come on up, Ron. And then why don't we just get the next three people ready. Herb Conley, uh about water and waste. Mary Mendoza about just information generally. And Kristin, bite again about permit specific to water. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, thank you for giving me a chance to speak here today. Uh my name is Ron Brooks, I've lived in Benson for twenty-seven years. Uh I'm pro uh business, I'm pro jobs. I really like the idea that the plant could hire a lot of people, good paying jobs. That's having come up here tonight, but that's okay. The problem is, I have, is there's even a chance that that could contaminate our aquifer. I say no, I say I really don't. Now, the assets have, we hear about it all the time. And, uh you know, back east and contamination, uh something goes wrong, a truck goes through the building, it spills, it flows down the river, now we're looking at like a fifty-year cleanup in our river. We can't afford that. It's like one block from this, our, our main pristine waterway to here. All of us drink this water. I, I, I just, I have a problem with, um, what they do about containment of these possible accidents. I understand that they're doing some fuel tanks on that property. I don't know what they're used for, but, um, do they have a containment system for that? Uh the other lady brought the, uh, uh, good condition. Do they have a hazmat people? Are they prepared to handle that kind of a situation? Because if we did have an accident there, we're talking, you know, a day or two before they show up down here to contain it, it's already too late, it's already destroyed this. And, uh, we know about this, it's been happened, uh, I, I don't really wanna bring up the gentleman thing, but, you know, the ground marks, town and people had all kinds of cancer they've not had for years. I also, a big problem with self laundering. I, I just, their record back in.
You repeat that? Big problem with what?
Self laundering. Okay, this is a company we're talking about back in Mississippi that has, uh, one of the other gentleman brought up, fifteen or something violations they've done.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, okay, see, now I have a problem with that. We need the state to mark that, or the state to mark that? Or there's some organization that said they wanna do this voluntarily, but this shouldn't have to be voluntary. This should be done by somebody that's state qualified to do this. I don't trust this company, so I just wanna make that point.
So thank you, Ron. Do you have kind of a general comments that you had? Or did you have a specific question? Because I don't wanna miss it if you did have one.
Uh well, I just wanted to know what kind of containment system they have from the plant downhill to the river. Okay, that's what, how they plan to contain all that? Because we know the rainwater, we'll be watching the parking lots, all the area around there. It's all gonna run right down to the river, so, thank you.
So that's containment on the water side is what I hear you saying? Yeah, and we don't have, like, there's not a permit for water, but is, are there comments that we could talk about containment systems? Josie?
So if, so if the information that we get, uh, from the company shows that they would need a general permit for stormwater, there would be best management practices that would be required, like burns, stuff like that, that would prevent that direct discharge. Now, if it occurs that there will be a direct discharge, again, that's a whole different individual permit. That is a, a year or two process rather than a general permit that you can just quickly get online. The individual permit has a host of, you know, pre-application meetings and studies that would be required. But again, that general stormwater permit, that if they would trigger that, would have those best management practices and that would, uh, would trigger inspections from the surface water protection team. Uh again, it would be the, the, the crux of that permit is best management practices for stormwater runoff. But at this time, I can definitively say if that permit will be triggered.
Okay, thank you, Ron. All right, Herb Conley?
Okay, no, sir. Thank you, nice to see you all here tonight. A lot of you have disappeared. Um, okay, um, thank you, DQ, for being here. I have a question. Um, can you tell me what comes out of that stack down the road? Anyone? Oh, you didn't know that, this stack down the road, St. David? Yeah, yeah, hello, what comes out of there? There were kinds of pollution. What kinds, how much? Uh, many questions, few answers. Okay, how can you write a permit with parameters? Not knowing what comes out of that stack? We can see what comes out of that stack sometimes. It's in the air, it flows out over the valley. Now, this is gonna mix in with it. You are probably sensing that a lot of people here have some serious frustrations. And there's some anger, there's a reason for that. This is not, not the appropriate location for your recycling. No way, no way. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, just one more thing. No way in hell.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, uh Mary Mendoza. Mary? Okay, maybe Mary, she's coming, okay. Um, Kristin, bite me? Come on up, Kristin, you had comments earlier, so, Ron, you gotta prepare.
So I heard from a few others, um, I think overall, a large concern is there's so many aspects in this permit that fully set up aluminum dynamics to function as a self-reporting entity. Which, given their history in other states that we don't acknowledge, but the general public, and it's very concerning. So, that's what I'm setting the stage with, is let me touch more specifically on these lapses in self-reporting. And I'm hoping that, uh, we can request changes to the permit as federal statutes require Title V permits contain clear, specific, and measurable limitations. These same federal statutes say that this permit should be practically enforceable by the public. So when you're telling us that we should be grateful that you use Tucson modeling air data, but at the same time you're telling us that we can't have specifics on the equipment, I'm not impressed by this, and this isn't okay. We want specifics on the equipment. And we don't want annual performance testing in a generalized log book. We want detailed defined parameters. And so, I don't know, I'll put it in formal writing for this request, but we want the specific equipment that will be used. They have a plant in Mexico already, there's no reason they can't be providing this. And we can't have real numbers, just like Catherine asked you earlier. We want that. Another aspect that I wanted to ask you about, I know in your PowerPoint, you brought up the ambient air monitor. Uh, does this monitor fall under the method nine limitations for monitoring?
Are you talking about the community hydrogen chloride?
Yes.
Yeah, that does not have a test method per se, because there are two different techniques. There's something called stack testing, where you're measuring pollution at the stack, the building. And those are required in the permit. There's a quarterly testing, and they can find the test metal number for you. Uh, a lot of our staff can do it for you. But the thing that I'm talking about is the community-based monitoring. That is a different kind of technology altogether. It's a network of receptors that are placed around the community because they wanna measure. Because, you know, to your point about, hey, this is all about hypothetical data, uh, you know, other companies' data. The thing is, the proof is in the pudding, we agree with that. You know, so the way we get at that is two ways. Like one, whatever requisition the company's making, there are limits in the permit. They gotta meet those things, like by stack testing. And the stacking, testing is not just done by the company. They gotta bring the third-party vendor who will follow an EPA protocol to do the test. And we review the reports, and we have engineers who actually are in the facility with the system. So I just wanna explain that aspect of our enforcement process. And the, the other thing is, you know, with respect to monitoring, that is again, one more area where we are not just content because we model, and we feel that the modeling is showing the facts to be protective. We take it one step forward, and like Tim talked about, this monitoring requirement is nowhere to be found in state law or federal law. But we have, we have an obligation to you as a community, right? We wanna make sure that we are not doing theoretical things and making you buy our product. We actually want to have actionable data.
Okay, so right here for the hydrogen chloride monitor, is this twenty-four seven running a day?
Exactly, twenty-four seven, yes.
And it's, so that falls under continuous emission monitoring?
No, can this emission monitoring system or what you apply in the stack? Okay, so two different things. When you are measuring emissions, you are measuring on a mass rate basis, like a gram per second or a pound per hour. That is what is measured through a continuous emissions monitoring system. What I'm talking about here is actually monitors, ambient monitors that measure concentrations. If you recall, there'd be folks like.
Are there gonna be continuous emission monitoring?
That is, they are going to become continuous concentration monitors.
Continuous concentration?
Monitoring.
Okay.
So, what they are gonna do is, you know, I showed us like with these impacts. These impacts are what we model, but we are not stopping there. We are actually going to track these concentration monitors spread within the community, on very sensitive locations.
Where are those locations? Where is this information you're referring to? Is it in the permit right now?
It is not in the permit, but the permit provides you a framework on what the.
We don't want a framework, we want the actual plan and how this is gonna be monitored.
That's correct, but the plan is part of the requirement of the permit, because the company has to submit a very rigorous, what is called a QUAP, a Quality Assurance Project Plan. So here's an elaborate document that's put together following EPA methodology. And we get to review it and we get to say, hey, the location that you guys are picking of not where we want these monitors to be at, and these will dictate that the monitors will need to go. So.
And this is all after a public comment period? That's great. Okay. Will they come back and show us where those will be? Or that's all after the fact?
Yeah, I mean, the, the project plan is, is a public talking. We, we are happy to make it available. So we gotta have a page up and running for aluminum dynamics. If this facility is printed, it's discussed, built and operated. Our intention is, because of the high level of interest from this community, every report that we compile, we do an inspection. Whether we get a monitoring report from the company, or we get what's called compliance settlement.
Yeah, you're referring to the too late period where you're already giving them a permit, where there's no specifics on equipment, there's no specifics on air monitoring, and then you're gonna come back and it's gonna be too late because the permit is already issued. Anyways, I don't need to spend more time on this because I have other questions that I need to get to. Okay. So, I think, back to water, um, for Randy and Water Man, just to clear up, it wasn't just aluminum dynamics that has said about the discharge on the golf course. The city of Benson has, um, put that in writing as well, so we'd be happy to provide you with that. And then the other question for you with water is, are they going to be discharging any processed fluids to the ground without any protection? Are there gonna be lined ponds or tanks on the property?
Uh, first question, quick clarification with the city of Benson. Did they say that that water would be gray water from the facility directly to the golf course? Or, uh, reused water from the Benson plant to the golf course? Gotcha, yeah, and that's what I presume would happen. So the Benson wastewater plant, that's where the permit would exist for that general management method. If they go the other route where it's a gray water processor straight from the plant, that would be regulated under a, a different kind of permit. So we'll, we'll catch you either way.
Have they had to end, yeah, their permit for the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate this internal change in wastewater?
The city of Benson has not yet.
Okay.
Uh, what was your, for the question, I forgot, I'm sorry. Oh, it was about discharge?
Yes.
Uh, yes. No, because they're discharging to the sewer, they're not gonna have any lined ponds, yeah. So that's our understanding now, however, if they did start discharge to the ground, if they discharged it to the ponds, if they injected it into the ground, treated water for the ground, all that would be stuff that would require a permit, right? Those are permitting actions if there's any sort of, uh, a possible impact to it.
I guess we'll just hope they self-report any of those changes. Okay, okay, last question, um, let's see. Will any processed byproducts, um, from their activities be stored at the site? Example, aluminum oxide solid material? If so, what is their makeup, proposed volumes, location of storage, and protection methods of storage from stormwater runoff?
Okay, so would any, will any of the substances be stored onsite is kind of what I understood you saying, solid waste? Yeah, so I'm speaking a little bit out of my current capacity. It's been a decade since I was in the waste program. So presumably they will be storing materials onsite, they would have to characterize those since landfills is appropriate, as is waste landfills, as Daniel talked about earlier, with apologies. So, um, I can't say offhand right now, um, but that is a regulated activity, uh, both the storage of solid waste, disposal of solid waste, and the characterization of that waste and make sure it ends up in the right landfill.
And then am I just forgetting, did he acknowledge, has that been covered by DDEQ, solid waste? And was it deemed that they wouldn't need additional permits for that?
We don't have anything waste related right now as far as a permit, is that accurate? It hasn't been submitted, is what I'm saying. Right. Yeah, there are a lot of questions, yep. Um, okay, I think next is Representative, oh, you would have asked.
I wanna give my time over to the others to speak.
That's fine. Thank you, Representative Diaz. All right, um, we have next then Tom Wilson, uh, questions about the geologic and environmental hazards. Michelle Hamlin, violations. Uh, Gene Renick, emissions and permits. So Tom, come on up, sir.
How are you all doing? Um, I have about two and a half questions, so I'm trying to make it fast. Um, one of the questions, the main one I have is, has there been a geologic survey done on the substrate of your building facility?
Geologic survey done on the substrate? We don't have a permitted water, so I think it's. Uh, not to our knowledge, but I think that would be more applicable probably to the zoning questions and the building code questions which are outside of our jurisdiction.
The reason why I ask that is, um, I know the geology of the area real well, and I'm concerned about the fault lines. I pick out fault lines every day practically. And what I'm concerned about is your substrate, my guess. My guess, between 280 to 300 feet thick of sand, rock, gravel and gypsum. There's no bedrock. Anytime there's vibration going on, constant vibration with the furnaces, with the starting of the motors and the constant vibration going on there, that could do a little shaking. And if there's any substrate that sinks, because between the distance of the San Pedro River and about three and a half miles away on either side, you have sinkholes. And you have what they call ground fissures. And these ground fissures, they could give way any minute. So considering that, also, we're on a slight seismic belt. So that means there's a possibility of earthquakes. You just never know. And so that's my concern there. We have no bedrock. We are sliding into the San Pedro River millimeters, maybe centimeters every year. We can't stop it. We live basically on a sandhill.
Thank you. All right, so was there a question there? I'm so sorry.
The question was, will there be or is there a geologic survey done on your building block?
Okay. Is that something that goes back to zoning? Because that doesn't sound like water. That wouldn't be water or air. It has to do with the building codes.
Okay, is there one more?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, question here for the gentleman there, second. At what time during the day do you do your air quality surveys? They're correct.
Do you mean like inspections?
Yeah, what time of day?
We don't go at a set time or set day. We try to answer, and sometimes, you know, this is an important question. If we get a complaint from somebody in the community saying that, hey, we're seeing something happen at a certain time of the day, we will try to ensure that we are out there, you know, to see what may be going on at that time of day. So we don't have a set pattern. We better be sure of the facility at 8:00 AM. It doesn't work like that. There are being times when you actually expect a plant late at night.
Okay, the reason why I ask that is because the particulates, especially nitric oxide and, you know, CO2 and all that, by the time, you know, the temperature drops below 55 degrees or whatever, that stuff settles. It settles low into the valleys and it hangs out and it lingers there.
Yeah.
Any condensation, that's gonna draw it even lower, and that's gonna settle probably right into the soil, into the farmland, whatever. So I have a challenge there for you. Make a survey of just between Apache Powder on Highway 80 and between Cowboy Lane and that area. It's pretty low. I challenge you to do your surveys over there.
Okay.
And I challenge you to do that at least four times a year. That way, you get a better reading on the air quality and then you'll have solid numbers. And that's the idea for you.
Thank you. I think that's a helpful suggestion. Thank you, Tom. I think that really helps stay our team, so thank you, sir. Okay, Michelle Hamlin? Michelle?
I want you to write that down.
Oh, that's more related to chess-related things, but they've taken that down. Is that accurate? Yeah, they're taking it down for sure. Okay, Michelle.
Okay, firstly, the question about using actual numbers rather than theoretical for your modeling. This is for the audience here. I have a name for you, Dr. Steven Petty. Dr. Steven Petty is a forensic engineer and environmental health and safety industrial hygienist. That is who we need because he deals in actual numbers. When Palestine trade agreement happened, he went there. So he is a fantastic patriot. So that's there. Also, in 1988, Congress passed a law declaring the San Pedro riparian area a protected area. Unfortunately, Benson opted out of that. And so it actually starts just south of Benson, in the St. David area. And so my question is, has that been factored into your modeling of the impact of any of what we're talking about here on that federally protected area?
So question is, have we considered the impact of the riparian preserve? Is that right? In St. David, is that accurate? And then, go ahead, say it again.
So the law that Congress passed in 1988 protects the San Pedro River riparian area, the entire ecosystem, including the aquifer, all the way through St. David to the Mexican border. So it's a huge responsibility that we have as a community to protect that because the people south of us are counting on it, including Mexico. So that's what I'm asking.
So we consider what effects this will have downstream, is what I hear you say. Okay. Upstream, I apologize, I apologize. Whatever the direction is that I don't know because I'm not from this community, I really apologize. Just south, there we go, I got that.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I worked on a lot like this facility. So all right, this is just a small snippet of sort of the modeling results we had.
Yeah, we didn't far. It's hard to get.
Is this better? So yeah, this is just a small snippet of the modeling. The actual modeling domain extended for 50 kilometers. So includes, you know, San Pedro River, you know, up north and down south. So impacts, you know, to air quality, you got fairly narrow scope that we modeled, which is air impacts. But we didn't, yeah, we didn't do the whole area. So it's like I said, 50 kilometers, yeah, area.
Any additional questions?
Yes. So the violations were already asked about. I think we all have a pretty clear picture about that. But I wanted to talk about the process that ADQ does. And I'm gonna use the Cottonwood facility of MRI as the case study. Most of you probably don't know about Cottonwood and MRI. MRI is Mineral Resources Incorporated. They're not the same type of plant at all, but the comparison is in ADQ's processes. Okay, so just to give you kind of a 40,000-foot view of start to finish here, but there is no fetish, poor Cottonwood, pray for them. Okay, so they were, MRI was given a conditional use permit, and then there were some violations. They had falsified information on that conditional use permit. So they had a violation from the city about that. There were a total of 16 violations that were combined between the city violations, ADQ issued ones and PDQ. So it was total violations. What has happened was, when the residents filed formal complaints and finally they were investigated, there was a revocation of the permit. And you would think, yay, win. No, EDQ issued a different permit so that the emissions were okay. So they went from a general permit to a, I believe it's called Level 2, permit because they found that the falsification of the information on the conditional use permit was not the accurate permit that the company was asking for. So they were emitting too much dust, and when that was found, nine years later it took for that switch to a different permit. So I bring this up as this is what we're talking about when we say the self-monitoring and the reporting and the complaints that the community had been filing. We don't want to be Cottonwood after the fact dealing with the cleanup.
I think you're three minutes, but we haven't ballistics addressed that?
Yeah.
Because I know ballistics involved in Cottonwood. Daniel, did you want to handle that? Speak to that maybe a little bit?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the comment. I didn't hear a question.
But did you have a question per se?
Yeah, thank you. Could you explain if you've learned any lessons? Because somebody actually had mentioned that there were lessons learned because your department, what you guys do is new-ish, and so you're learning about how to fine-tune those.
So this is new, not what they do in the permit, just to be.
Okay, so what can we learn from what the situation that Cottonwood is in about as a community, you know, what kind of recourse is there? Or anything that you guys can offer? And also what things are in place so that there is some safety nets? So that doesn't happen?
Great question, and I don't know how familiar you are with the MRI and, you know, situation, but it is, we don't have enough time to be going through it here, right? But we did learn some lessons, right? So ADQ did issue the law permit initially, and we're working to write that to the legal system and other options following statute law rule. We also heard the community's concern, and we did a community monitoring project up there to understand what potential contamination may have left the MRI site, right? So we did air monitoring, we did soil monitoring. I don't think we did any water monitoring, and we're doing a health consultation with the.
AHS.
With ADHS, Arizona Department of Health Services, to try to understand that, right? So we are setting forward, looking for any, trying to get the answers, right? And we're still doing some analysis. The permit has not been issued, just to clarify. And I bet they're operating under a permit shield, so it's kind of different, right? So we're still inspecting, we're still doing non-mono inspections. We're still following the common, right? So we are following the legal process, statute of rule, and addressing that situation and doing analysis to provide information to the community and more information to the public. That's, we're not done with our investigation or report called, report out to the community. But yeah, we will be here, you know, through the process, follow the rules of statutes and, you know, answer the ask for to the community. So, you know, if and when the facility is built here, you have found, filed complaints, call us, let us know. That is what we are here. I'm taking care of, I've got my complaints, you know, section management complaints. We are here to respond to questions, you know? I've got to follow the statute.
Thank you, Michelle. We are gonna need to wrap with the next person just because we are getting close to the 9 o'clock time period, or we need to wrap the meeting generally with some comments from Eric and from Daniel. So Jeanie will be our last speaker. Jean, are you here? Jean Reenick? Did I get that right? Okay, I guess we can go to the next person then. Mike Zinchek? I'm sorry if I butchered that. Mike? Okay. Darby Getzweiler? Sounds like some people have left, so sorry about that. Misty Bloom? We have Misty here? Oh, are you Misty? Okay, perfect. Thanks for coming up, Misty.
I'll try to be fast. Okay, I just want to address you guys first. I recognize the difficult position you all are in. It's Arizona's job to protect the people from polluters first and foremost. But you are in the position to give polluters permission. Talk about a rock and a hard place. It's a very difficult position you guys are in. I hope you consider us when you think of, however, the process that, if you approve it, it sounds like that's a done deal, but think of us. Okay. It is required by law that the permit is practically enforceable by the public. This gentleman, forgive me, I forgot your name, but the first gentleman over here. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's that.
Okay. Admitted that the numbers are theoretical. ADI supplies the numbers and ADQ doesn't deny permits. Do I understand that correctly? That's what I've heard so far, at the very beginning.
I said, I said, I am one who was denied permit, did not deny permit since I've been there for a while.
Okay.
And what I said is they have an opportunity to make modifications to the permit if this mission is identified by ADQ during the public comment period and we want to make modifications and they should meet the requirements of state and federal law.
Okay, I did hear the theoretical numbers thing, and that's horrifying. That's a resident to hear.
And it's theoretical numbers because they're not operating at this point, right? So we have numbers that say that they're meant to, we've got emission calculations and factors from equipment. We have all that stuff. So until they actually operate and they're doing the monitoring and we see actually the damage through and through code. Sorry.
It's offensive, why?
Sorry. Until we have that, it's theoretical, and that's why we need the monitoring, we want to do the monitoring, that's why there's reporting. Because we will have real numbers more so than just so that operate.
Not to be philosophical, but is there such thing as a not static? Like, these numbers are not static and they never will be static, and it's dependent on many factors. And that's actually what I was gonna bring up too. Not to cut you off, I know we're in a hurry here. Okay, so what I was gonna say is, the numbers are theoretical. ADI supplies the numbers and ADQ doesn't deny permits. How can you therefore promise safety to the residents of Benson if these contaminant levels are theory? And how does this follow Arizona law that dictates it must be enforceable? How is this permit enforceable as a practical matter by the public as written into AC law, which that's been asked a few times? So it's okay if you don't answer. One thing that I noticed with the hydrogen chloride slide popped up at the beginning, it doesn't seem to reflect a static number. That's not, that's, I mean, I've lived here for seven years, and so we all understand the wind, and Kimberly, spoken, mentioned the winds. Like, we who live on ranches, you know, we understand, we understand our deserts, and our desert isn't static. Like, we get to know, it's like the ocean. You really can't predict the movement of the ocean. It does what it wants. And that is the nature of the desert. The waters do what they want. We respect it. And so this, to me, when I look at this as a student, as a researcher myself, how, like, that's not a static number. You know, and there's children in that little green part. So yeah, that's, that's, let me see my comment on that. Sorry to not be clear here. Okay, it does not seem to reflect a static number. Wind is a factor, monsinal weather, which could accumulate hydrogen chloride disproportionately across this valley. What varying factors were considered with the values on the slide you showed and how? I'd like to note that OSHA standard for the workplace is five hearts per million for hydrogen chloride.
So when I put up this slide and talked about the, this was modeling, it was not projected to be a snapshot of time. It really is representative of the modeling over a span of time. You know, at one point, you talked about using geological data over a three-year span. So essentially, you take into account multiple geological phenomena over three years span. So you're trying to figure out what happens over a span of a lengthy window of time to see how the impacts change. So what we're showing here is when you mark through all these different scenarios, these are what we expect to be like the worst case impacts.
Well, that doesn't really make any sense to me because the accumulation is gonna be so varying. Like, what we know about science, what we know about how the wind, you're gonna have like heavy accumulation in one area in one day, in one hour. There will be consolidated parts per million. Like, there will, that's not, like, there, you can't just stick a pin on a map and say, this is where all the bad stuff's gonna be. And there's children in that green part. I homeschool, but I, I'm, you know, three miles, you know, three miles east of it.
So when we show these concentrations on this kind of a map, I'm not implying that the only locations where there are hydrogen chloride measured, a lot of those locations, we just put it as a frame of reference because we want to pick out the more sensitive locations. Because there's the nursing home, as you know, the very, nursing homes. And then there's the Benson Hospital, the rehab center, and then the school. We just picked these three locations. For example, we're not saying that there will be no concentration head square around the Benson area.
So it could be true with that logic that you just stated, that since there's variability. that since there's variability, it could actually be much greater concentration at a different given time.
Not much higher. There would be some level of concentrations, but not much higher. Because then we model, like Michael talked about, we model over a grid. We don't model specific spots. We span out lengthy diameter around the facility. Because we are spanning out and we are putting receptors, that's a term we use in the model, which are closely spaced. So, we can say from a model at every single one of these receptors, what is the expected concentration?
So, I think we're looking at things a little bit differently because I'm looking at it as I control that variable and I always see variable here. So, I guess, you know.
The one takeaway that I can communicate is, you see that number in the facility passing? Point double zero one six. You see it? From the aluminum dynamics project, the hydrogen chloride modeling, that is the single highest expected concentration.
Over a three-year span?
Around the highest.
Like, gathered over a three-year span.
Over three years. Right, that's the model.
Right.
And the other takeaway is, as you get farther away, those concentrations keep disappearing. It gets smaller.
So, yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying, but I totally disagree with you just because of the variability of where the wind takes particulate. I mean, it could concentrate in a lot of different places. It could actually concentrate right there because it's no, it's no, there's no predictability, right? I mean, generally.
Ball, do you have a question? Michael, Mike has.
Yeah, so this is both in a long-term story. So, this is the highest one-hour concentration. So, the way these air models work is it takes, we use three years of data and we use every hour of every year of those three years, right? So, every year we have eight thousand seven hundred and sixty scenarios. Right, this is, of all those scenarios we want, this is the worst one, right? So, that's what we're showing there. And for every one of those scenarios, we modeled thousands of points. So, this is the worst case. So, this is, could be, you know, typically we see the higher concentration at the night or these stagnant conditions. A lot of folks that, you can visualize that where it accumulates, you see it in valleys. We're capturing that in the model because we're running so many simulations with actual land data. The other thing is that hour by hour, the concentrations don't accumulate, which are, you don't get pockets where, you know, hydrogen chloride will accumulate and build up, right? So, we modeled each hour sort of separately. That's just how the models work.
Okay. I wish I had a pocket. I wish I had a monitor so I know what was coming. Thank you for your answer. But I do wanna say that the OSHA standard for the workplace is five parts per million for hydrogen chloride. So, I'll let you, really smart math people, figure out how that compares.
Okay. Maybe one more question?
One more question. Okay. How deep will the stacks go into the ground? And is this gonna, it's a general overview question. Can I just read the little thing? It'll be quick. How deep will the stacks go into the ground? And is this going to come into contact with groundwater? How will this plant prevent groundwater contamination? How does this not qualify for the necessity of an aquifer protection permit preemptively? And also, it would seem that a surface water AZDPS, I think I said that right, permit would be necessary because if the particulates released into the air one tenth of a mile away from a river over time, that would be a heavy particulate load. Sorry, was that way too many questions or anything?
Yeah, was there a specific question?
Okay. So, now, the stacks, I'm guessing, just from a construction perspective, when you get a T-post, you have to drive it in the ground far, right? So, I'm a rancher, so I understand that. You have to drive, the farther you get it down to the ground, the more difficult. So, stacks, how far are they going down? Will it affect groundwater? And how can, how can you guys assure that ground, the groundwater right on the river won't be contaminated by whatever they are, land cooling towers or whatever?
So, the question is, how far down do the stacks go? Will it contaminate groundwater, you say?
Will it be at the water table and, and, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have a question about this foundation of the stacks and how far down. I don't know. Aren't you curious? Curious about? Sorry, sorry. I know. I mean, yeah, we're looking at, again, air quality standpoints. I mean, the water panel is valid, but, you know, not structural in here.
Will it be hitting the ground? Ask for him.
Ready?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not aware how deep they would go. I can't think of any instance where we had to issue an ADP for stacks foundation being below the surface, though. He did, no. But if it turned out that they were discharging or had the probability of discharge, of course, it would be regulated, but it's just not something I've heard of before. But we'll take a look at the plan just to see if anything looks funky. Any ADPs are required prior to discharge. Surface water would be prior to discharge.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for the final question. Misty, is that right? Because I have a bunch of names here.
Misty.
Misty, okay, thank you, Misty. All right, so thank you all for coming tonight. Good conversation, lots of questions, lots of good questions. We hope this has been illuminating. We are trying to get out to communities and speak with people about these concerns that exist surrounding things that are coming to communities. We're gonna go ahead and wrap up here and I can't remember. Are you going first, Eric, or is Daniel? Okay, so we'll have Daniel give us some closing thoughts here and then Eric's gonna wrap up the night just with some final things, so.
Good luck, everyone. We're fucked.
Yeah, I wanna echo Justin. Thank you for attending. I really appreciate you guys coming out. Appreciate the large crowd, but a lot of people left, looks like. Also, wanna thank Benson High School for allowing us to have this community here. Really appreciate it. Thank you for the questions. Thank you for the engagement. Thank you for your passion, right? I heard your passion a lot more clear, right? So, we are here to explain the process. Now, hopefully you learned something today. Please submit your comments. Please submit your comments to us, right? If you didn't answer your question, you wanna be on the floor or you want us to respond, please submit those questions to us in writing, you know, either email, smart comment, which I don't have a thing, US mail. Or you can come here, you know, two weeks from tonight, through the public hearing and you can verbally, you know, state your comments. We handle it right at that back. Every comment we receive, we will respond. We will read, we will respond to it. So, please, let us know if you have any questions or concerns. It doesn't matter how you submit your comment, right? So, if you can't get here next Monday, you can send it to us by mail or phone, right? They're all, you can read every single one of them. There's no difference.
Cool them live.
Are we allowed to be here then? After the instruction, I forgot who gave it about the best way to write the comments that you already submitted.
You shouldn't, so, yes.
We can't do another?
Yeah, well, we're gonna take each comment, right? So, you already submitted one? You got your?
Yeah, it'll stay up permanently. Be cool with them live. Be transferred to our YouTube page. We can do it.
So, yeah, so please, you know, submit those. I strongly encourage you to do that. We want to hear it from the community. That is why we are here. That's why my team is here. That's why Water Law came here, right? We may not have the answers that we like. We may not like our answers, but we heard you a lot.
So, if we still have questions, those of us that were not able to have their questions answered, how will that work? Who do we get in touch with?
So, we're gonna be around, so if you have any questions right now, please talk to my team.
Okay.
We're gonna be here for a little bit, right? Anyone that did not have any questions to answer, we're gonna be here for a little bit. I'm not gonna, how long can we? We're trying to back up Phoenix tonight. But for a while, we will get to court, right?
And then Eric's also gonna talk about the way that you can submit your comments so that you have a chance to get those through to us. Just as Daniel said, we wanna hear those, so go ahead, Eric.
Thanks, Justin. I wanted to say in closing tonight's meeting that we do value the community and your time coming out here tonight, all your questions and concerns. We really think that open dialogue is important to this continued progress over the common issues, especially matters that are important, that's air quality and water quality. We're here tonight to give you the information that you need to make these meaningful comments, so please take that opportunity during this period. The formal period doesn't end on August twenty-first. We have the same formal public hearing on that date. So, all the way up until that and then all those comments there, they're gonna be included in a formal response in the summer and then we'll reach out and we'll answer all those questions. Again, if there aren't any questions that you haven't been able to ask tonight during our Q and A, we've got folks sticking around, please ask them your questions. And we're gonna provide those of you who signed up for updates on the site sheet with those updates. And they're gonna go through the air permitting process as goes. Reminder again that our cards are available for air quality and my card personally. You can always reach out by email and give comments. And there's also other ADQ contacts available. There's the link to the permit webpage where you can find all those permit documents. That also helps you make meaningful comments. The link to the smart comments, including that QR code at the bottom of your agenda and the MITLY link, that's really your best way to leave comments. I would heavily suggest you use that formal comment portal and you can write as many comments as you would like. Again, it's not one comment and that's it. And please take that home with you for the materials we give to you tonight, home with you. And with that, I'm gonna say safe travels to everybody and again, we thank you for attending.